Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission meeting. This is January twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you all for being here tonight. For those of you who are here for the first time, welcome. Welcome to the city of Fort Lauderdale. And let me just explain a little bit about how we proceed with our meetings. We start with our pledge of allegiance, and then we get into a few announcements, and then we have presentations. The presentations are normally to recognize individuals, groups, events. And tonight, we have just one, which will be done by the Vice Mayor, Dr. Sturman. So before we begin, let me ask you all to please join me in rise and for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst. Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sturman.
Here.
Mayor Trent House.
Here. Just got full attendance tonight. Got a couple of agenda announcements. CM seven, the CAM, and Exhibits one and two were revised to correct the number of hotel rooms and the associated application fee. M six, revisions were made to Exhibit three, Pages four, sixteen, eighteen, twenty, and twenty-two and twenty-five. Where are these? Are they emailed to us?
Emailed, and also there's a copy of it. That was the one that just came in a little bit ago. There's one on.
Okay. M eight, the CAM was revised to add additional language, to add Page one. Exhibit one was revised to remove duplicated pages. PH three, the agenda title should read "Commission Districts one, two, three, and four." So having said all of that, would someone like to move to approve that agenda and the minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved. Second.
Removed and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trent House.
Yes, and the minutes and the agenda are now approved. So let's move right into the Community Appearance Award for District four. Vice Mayor Sturman, front and center.
You are honored. This is my first presentation. You guys should be exquisitely honored. At this time, I'm going to call up Frank and Barbie Barfield, as well as Cabot Edward, Chair of the Community Appearance Board.
Nice house.
This isn't a side. This is Rio Vista neighborhood. I was president fourteen years. It's dear to my heart. At this point, Cabot, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Frank and Barbie Bearfield are the visionaries behind the property located at sixteen oh eight Southeast Eighth Street in Rio Vista. The duo completed an overhaul of the landscaping in front of their home to achieve a pristine manicured entryway. Embracing native plants, they selected vibrant Florida landscape with an assortment of complementary plant textures, growth direction, and colors. Upon entering the property, several Phoenix reclinata and thatch palms frame the gate. Under those lush palm trees, a trove of liriope greenery and flirting pink bromeliads were planted to add a splash of color. Complementing the foliage is a mix of decorative beige stones that perfectly marry the landscape with the driveway and entryway to the home. Looking up, African irises were planted in the star fruit, copper planters perched atop the gate columns. To enhance the front entrance, looking to the right, your attention is drawn to the cassia tree and the new vibrant alcantaraia bromeliad planted below. Crossing the gate threshold, neatly manicured green island ficus and jasmine minima help separate the lush landscape from the hardscape of the tan stone driveway, and flirting pink bromeliads make another appearance to brighten up the landscape with vivid color. To symmetrically, symmetrically frame the front door, Thatch Palms were placed along either side while white bougainvillea adorns the columns. Along the front wall, planted podocarpus provides a transition from the bright white exterior to the expertly designed landscape scheme. Clean lines from, from the luccula spinosa plants and soft edges of the flirting pink bromeliads work in tandem to display a variety of shapes and textures. Chocolate brown mulch was placed around the foliage, tying everything together while providing a beautiful contrast to the greenery. The updates complement the neighborhood and increase curb appeal, making this wow property a breathtaking must-see.
Cabot, thank you. I am so glad you had to read that instead of me. I would have messed that up big time. Thank you so much for your, for your service. And again, Rio Vista is dear to my heart. The Fort Lauderdale City Commission and the Community Appearance Board proudly presents you this wow award to Frank and Barbie Barfield, and thank you both for enhancing Rio Vista neighborhood and the city of Fort Lauderdale. We are honored to present you with the certificate of appreciation from the City Commission, a gift certificate from Petrino's Cuban Restaurant, an orchid from Fresh Market, and a sign to place in your front yard to celebrate this recognition. That was a lot easier to read than some of those plants. Congratulations. Want to say a few words? You want to say a few words?
I wish I could tell you that my wife spent all of her time on her hands and knees doing all of this planting over the, over the last year. But we did pay somebody to do that. Thank you very much. We love being in Fort Lauderdale.
And they get, they get a yard sign, don't they also? Yeah, you took the yard sign. Very nice. Display it proudly. Okay, so that's it with our presentations tonight, and now we'll get on to the regular meeting. So the regular meeting, the agenda is divided up into a couple of different sections. The beginning of it has to do with what's called the Consent Agenda. And at that time, we, the commission votes on a group of items all at once, and, and, and then those, once those items are voted upon, there's no further need for anyone who's here on behalf of those items to remain in the meeting unless you want to continue to stay in the meeting. If a particular item is, is pulled by one of the members of this commission, then we will vote on that item separately. Also, if someone has signed up to speak with regard to any of those consent agenda items, if the commissioner has pulled that item, you can speak at that time. Otherwise, if a commissioner has not pulled that item, I would invite you to come to the podium and speak before we vote on the, on the full agenda of consent agenda items. So let me ask the commission if they would like to pull any consent agenda items. Commissioner Herbst?
No.
None? Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None.
Commissioner Glassman?
None, thank you.
And Commissioner Vice Mayor Sturman?
None.
None? Okay. Well, as it happens, there are a few people who sign up to speak, so let's go through this. Some of these are questions only, so you don't want to really speak unless, okay. We have CM six, James Labrie. James, are you here? Would you like to come up and speak on, on CM six?
This is regarding a motion approving a license and an agreement for sale, service, consumption, food and alcohol beverages on the public beach. Yeah. Mayor Trentalas, Vice Mayor Sturman, Commissioners Beasley Pittman, Glassman, and Herbst. My name is James Labrie, and I have been a resident of Pointeza Heights for over twenty years. I am the Vice President of the Pointeza Heights Civic Association and a member of the City of Fort Lauderdale's Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee. I'm speaking tonight for myself and not as a representative of any of the aforementioned organizations or committee. I spoke on this issue of alcohol on the beach back in October of two thousand and twenty-two, and I feel compelled to speak on the issue again tonight. I am not against alcohol on the beach. Rather, I welcome it. I am against the approach the city has taken with this pilot program that allows illegal serving and consumption of alcohol, but only when an individual is seated in a rented beach chair in front of one of the oceanfront hotels. At the City Commission meeting two weeks ago, a consent motion was approved that allows the Hilton Hotel to serve alcohol on the beach. Tonight, there are two more consent motions from similar oceanside hotels, the W and the Four Seasons. I'm sure there will be more to come in the future. I agree that these hotels should be allowed to serve alcohol to their guests as they lounge in the chairs on the beach, but I feel it is discriminatory that for me to be served, I must first rent a lounge chair that sits on a public beach in front of a hotel's property. If I bring my own beach chair and umbrella to the Sebastian Beach and pop open a can of beer from the twelve-dollar six-pack I brought with me, I am at risk of receiving citations for possession of an open container and for drinking on the beach. However, if I move fifty feet south so that I'm in front of the Ritz Carlton and rent a beach chair for eighteen dollars and an umbrella for twenty-five and order a beer for, I'm going to say, ten bucks, my alcohol possession and consumption is considered legal, but I had to spend fifty-three dollars for that beer. This arrangement makes no sense to me, and I am disappointed that the city attorney's office has not done any follow-up that I'm aware of about the legality of the pilot program. I don't believe this resolution was well thought out. In my opinion, it is half-baked and that it imposes a financial burden on local taxpayers who want to enjoy an alcoholic beverage on a public beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labrie, are you against CM six?
I'm against the resolution that was passed in October.
Right, but that's not on the agenda tonight. That was passed and it's been.
But I'm making a statement about it.
Okay, but are you against CM six?
You can vote for it if you want.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Greg, this pilot program, it's from one-to-one. What's the date from one-to-one?
From the moment that the ordinance passed for a year.
Okay, and you don't know when that was, do you?
That time, I can, I can find out.
It's about a month ago.
November first, at City Attorney's.
November first, okay.
Okay, so one year.
Three months.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve consent agenda items?
Moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and those consent agenda items are now approved. So those people who are here on those items, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you're, you are now also welcome to leave if you would like. Start with M one, motion approving event agreements and related road closures for Great American Bash Burger Bourbon Taco and Margarita Fest. Someone like to introduce, someone like to make the motion to approve the event?
Mayor, I do have some questions, if that's okay. Would you like the motion first?
Let's get the motion on the floor, and then we can have discussion.
Okay, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Okay, discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. So at my pre-agenda meeting last evening, a couple of questions came up on these applications. On both of them, if you look at Exhibit one, page two of seven, for instance, there is a section, part three of an information, and there is a section for admission registration, which typically is for a fee. The box is checked yes, but there's no amount listed there. It says, if yes, how much? And that's left blank. So is, the question is, is there a fee for this event? Again, this would be the Great American Bash Burger Bourbon Make-A-Wish, folks, and then also.
You mean a fee to, to participate in the event?
Yeah, and an admission fee. Yeah, no, actually, an admission fee, because this is under events information.
Is Gina Ellis here? Is there a fee to, if there are fees to enter the Burger Bash?
So I'm going to ask Parks Director to come up and.
Mr. Thornburg.
Yeah.
I thought it was your event, because all the good events are there, so.
Yeah, we'll have to ask the promoter to come up and, and address what they're planning on charging. I don't know what their fee is, planning on charging.
If, if there is a fee, we don't know if there's a fee.
So it probably makes sense that if there is, if someone does check yes, and then it says, if yes, how much, we probably need to make sure that's filled in.
You're correct, Commissioner. That, that.
And then that's the same, that's the same for the next one, page two of seven on Exhibit two. That would apply to the Taco and Margarita Fest. Same thing. They have it checked yes, but blank on, if yes, how much?
Okay. No, I apologize. We'll definitely make sure.
This is in America's backyard? Yeah.
Yes.
Is anyone here for either one of those, Brittany?
Are you part of this, are you part of this event?
Yes, I am.
Come on up, please. There's a burning question on Commissioner Glassman's tongue here.
Two burning questions.
Two burning questions.
Hello.
Hi, what's your name?
Gustavo.
Gustavo, welcome.
Gustavo Valentin.
Gustavo, are you able to speak on both of these events, or just the Great American Bash Burger? Or are you speaking on the Taco and Margarita Fest?
For either or, I don't really have pricing on what they're doing at the door.
Well, this is a, the burger, the Bash Burger is a fundraiser for Make-A-Wish, correct?
Yeah, it's for Make-A-Wish.
So there probably is going to be an admission of some sort, because it's a fundraising event. So.
Okay, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm not going to hold up these two events at all. I'm just saying that in the future, if we're going to see an application come to us that has that box checked, it probably makes sense to answer the question that goes along with it, saying, if yes, how much?
Okay.
That's all.
All right.
I guess I'll buy that information as soon as.
So, Commissioner Glassman?
Have it in hand right now.
I am looking at the website, and there is a charge. It's taking place February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the charge general admission's thirty-five dollars. There's a VIP package for a hundred and fifty dollars.
That's for the Great American Bash Burger or the Taco and Margarita Fest?
Great American Bash.
Okay, and what about Taco and Margarita Fest?
One second.
We don't have any information on that?
I'm looking at it, and the only information I see is the start and end time from the internet. I would have to get back to you on that, with staff can look further into it.
Okay. Again, Mayor, I'm not going to hold these up with this, but I just wanted to bring that out so that.
All right.
I'm sorry. The Taco and Margarita Fest, fifteen dollars, regular and forty-five and sixty-nine VIP.
Thank you, City Manager. We good?
We're good. I'll drink to that.
Okay. I'll front it for you if you need it.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
Again, I, I move the item.
It's already been moved. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and M one is approved. Moving on to M two.
Thank you.
We have a couple, one person signed up. This is regarding an event agreement for Saint Jerome Catholic Church and School Fall Festival two thousand and twenty-three. Evelyn Rodriguez, you're just, you're just here to support it, right? I'm sorry? Come right up.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Okay, so I'm here to represent Saint Jerome for the event. The event is February ninth to the twelfth. But today, we received an email from the project manager for this stormwater project, and this stormwater project is scheduled to be starting next week. First phase, two weeks. Second phase, two weeks. And as we see it, it's going to be blocking the main entrance, not only to the school that can be arranged to have, you know, they are blocking one side first, the other side in the other two weeks, but it will fall exactly where we have our carnival, which is, of course, our biggest fundraiser of the year, and we are not sure if there's anything to do to postpone a little bit.
Why is it called the Fall Festival if it's in February?
It used to be fall, it was in the fall. We're not in the fall anymore. We, we used to have it in the fall always. Unfortunately, last year, we ran into several issues, so we had to push it for February.
Okay.
So.
So is anyone from Public Works here to tell us? There's no one here from Public Works. The chair is empty.
Oh, there he is, okay.
Mr. Dodd, why are you trying to interfere with their festival?
Mayor, Commissioners, this is part, I believe, the River Oaks Stormwater Project. It is part of the regularly scheduled work, so we, we can talk to the contractor and see if we can make some accommodations, but I, I, this is the first I've heard of this issue, so I'll have to see what we can do tomorrow.
So it's that, it's that whole weekend, Thursday, Friday, but they don't work Saturday, Sunday, so if it could be, if it could be somehow delayed Thursday and Friday, what you're saying? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
We'll appreciate it.
We would appreciate that.
Okay, well, say a prayer, and I think Mr. Dodd will be able to help you.
We'll, we'll see what we can do.
We've been praying, believe me.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, we will do our very best, but I, I just want to, want to say that, you know, I don't want to incur additional change order fees, because we're very strict on our budget. Well, we will do our best, though.
Okay.
Sometimes they're very flexible. So I'm just letting you, putting that on the record.
Okay, so if, what are the, what will be the situation? So if not.
We will work with you to accommodate as best as possible.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And we do have another question. Maybe that, this one is easier. It will be years before, probably twenty nineteen, when was the last, before the pandemic, the city used to provide us with a light sign, like that little trailer with the sign saying, you know, announcing the carnival. Is that something that is doable? Again, it was not done in two thousand and twenty-one, when we had our Alaska carnivals.
What kind of a trailer?
You know, the light one that says, will say Saint Jerome Carnival, and it will direct people towards that site? I was not around when that happened, but I know it was there, so.
Phil, do you know what that's about?
I thought it was going to be easier.
I assume, Mayor, she's talking about a signage board like we have out on the streets for.
Like electronic sign? Electronic sign? Electronic billboard?
Yeah, so we can check with PD, and, you know, if it helps with the traffic situation and showing people where to go, and if we have an rebuttal, we'd gladly, you know, give it to them.
All right. Thank you. Stay in touch with Mr. Thornburg?
Sorry?
Stay in touch with Mr. Thornburg, so he can talk to you about whether or not that electronic billboard is available for your event.
Super. Thank you very much. Very, very much.
You're very welcome. Would someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and good luck with the festival. I'm sure it'll be a great success. M three, motion approving an event agreement and extended road closure beyond Ten A.M. on the Barrier Island for the La Solas Triathlon. No one has signed up to speak. Anyone have any questions?
I do, Mayor.
Did you sign up to speak?
No, I didn't.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, and I apologize, because I know that my colleagues and maybe even City Manager will think that I sound like a broken record already, but I bring this up every time we have beach events, so I think that we need to just get a little bit more aggressive, City Manager, maybe meeting with the neighborhood on a more regular basis, and really going over the traffic plans and what we're gonna do every time we have an event on the Barrier Island. I'm not so much concerned with south of La Solas, but particularly north of La Solas, around the Seabreeze, the Cortez intersection, Berch and Cortez intersection, you know, right now, we're doing an amazing project at the La Solas Marina, there are already many detours, but these areas become real nightmares, and it gets worse and worse and worse, and I bring it up at every single meeting that we have, a beach event, but it's just the same, it's the same comments after each time, so we, we need to just get a grip on this, figure this out, we definitely need to have more people stationed on the beach, whether it's police or traffic aides or whatever, you know, directing traffic, guiding traffic, preventing all of these bottlenecks, especially in light of all of the construction that's going on the Barrier Island, so I'm gonna request that, you know, people reach out to the President of the CBA, Bill Brown, and really, whether it's gonna take a committee or something, but we have to do more than we're doing, because this problem just continues, so I'm just asking for your cooperation, that we can get a grip on this, so that, you know, the visitors that are coming to the Barrier Island for these events can enjoy all of the events, and yet the residents who live on the Barrier Island are not just totally inconvenienced, so whatever you can do would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, Commissioner, we will, we will make it part of the process to be inclusive of the President of CBA, and also any other HOAs north of La Solas.
Yes, because it's a busy calendar for beach events, and we got a lot coming up, so we've really gotta handle on this, or else, you know, people are just gonna lose their minds.
Yes.
Thanks, appreciate it. I can move this item, Mayor.
Thank you, would you like, would someone like to second it?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and the motion's approved. M4, motion approving an agreement for the Greater Fort Lauderdale Pride, Inc., for Pride of the Americas Parade and Festival. Someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and the item is approved, good luck, fellas. M5, motion authorizing purchase of property insurance underwriters at Lloyds of London, No one has signed up to speak. Someone like to introduce the motion?
Introduced.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and M5 is now approved. M6, motion approving an agreement with the Florida Panthers Hockey Club Enterprises for a three-day 2023 Truly Hard Seltzer NHL All-Star Beach Weekend Event and Music Concert on Fort Lauderdale Beach, that was a mouthful. Three people to sign up to speak, but only for questions, anyone have any questions or comments?
Mayor, just to follow up on the other two events, this also has the box checked yes for an admission fee, but then it says if yes, how much, and it says zero, so that probably doesn't even make much sense to me, but I just wanna make sure, is there any
Mr. Millage, are you here? There he is. How much are you charging?
John Millage, attorney for the Panthers, I'll have to defer to the NHL representative, I think, I think the day, the events during the day don't have a charge, but there is a concert I think they're gonna have there, so I'll have to refer to Mr. Gennarelli, or-
Is Mr. Gennarelli here?
Mr. Tilbrook is here also, either-
Mr. Gennarelli, welcome. Did you fly down here from New York to be with us?
Hello, Mayor, my name's Nick Gennarelli from the National Hockey League, hello to all the Commissioners, there is not an admission fee, it's $0, and the concert is a private event, also, it's a private event, so it's a paid, paid ticket, but it's not a public on sale.
Okay, how do you get to go to the concert?
What's that?
How do you get to go to the concert?
If you are a corporate sponsor, or a family and friends of the National Hockey League, it's, the audience is for 3,000 people.
Great, any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it.
And congratulations on having the All-Star event coming here to Fort Lauderdale, thank you.
It's very exciting, it is, it's great.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Tilbrook, haven't seen you in a while.
He just had to say hello for the billing purposes, it's okay, thank you, that's great, thank you, all right, it's all good, Steve.
Would someone like to move the item?
Introduced.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that item is now approved. M7, that's a motion approving a service agreement for the proprietary purchase of bulk waste processing with Waste Management, one person signed up to speak, but for questions only, anyone have any questions, if not, would someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and M7 is now approved. M8, motion approving a service agreement for the proprietary purchase of recyclable materials processing, Waste Management, Inc. I have two people sign up to speak, but they're from Waste Management, only here to respond to questions, if there are no questions, would someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second? Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and M8 is now approved. M9, motion approving negotiated fee schedule and continuing agreements for construction, engineering, inspection services, various consultants, no one has signed up to speak, anyone have any questions with regard to this item? There being none, would someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that item is now approved. R1, appointment of board and committee members, Mr. Clerk, would you like to read the names?
Yes, for the names to appear on the February 7th, 2023 Resolution, Consensus, Board of Adjustment, Fred Stresso, that's consensus in alternate position nominated by Vice Mayor Sterman, Public Art and Placement Advisory Board, Lisa Burgess, nominated by Vice Mayor Sterman, 2023 Walk of Fame Induction Committee, Gina Ellis, that's consensus nominated by Commissioner Herbst, then for new appointments, Education Advisory Board, Juliette Gray Williams, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, and we have, for tonight, we do have three additional, late additions that weren't on the resolution, so I was gonna read those names, and if we're okay, we can do the resolution as amended. For the Charter Revision Board, Ben Sorensen, nominated by Mayor Trentalas, and the Downtown Development Authority, Kenneth Stiles, nominated by Mayor Trentalas, Infrastructure Task Force Advisory Committee, Michael Lambrex, nominated by Mayor Trentalas.
Are there any further modifications or additions?
I still have to read the ones that fore tonight as well.
Read the rest, okay.
Cemetery Systems Board of Trustees, Dennis Ulmer, nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Ray Thrower, nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Charter Revision Board, Richard Weiss, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, Christopher Furtig, nominated by Vice Mayor Sterman, Citizens Police Review Board, Alex Jean, nominated by Vice Mayor Sterman, Economic Development Advisory Board, Kevin Cochran, nominated by Mayor Trentalas, Fire Rescue Facilities Bond Issue Blue Ribbon Committee, Charles Tattlebaum, nominated by Vice Mayor Sterman, Insurance Advisory Board, Steve Botkin, nominated by Mayor Trentalas, Parks Rec and Beaches Board, Barbara McGill, nominated by Vice Mayor Sterman, and 2023 Walk of Fame Induction Committee, Dr. George Hamberry, nominated by Mayor Trentalas, and Robert Lockery, nominated by Commissioner Herbst, and that rounds it out.
Okay, very good. Any further additions or modifications? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Second.
Amended.
As amended.
Second.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the Exhibit Attached Here Two and made a part here of. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and those folks are now been appointed to those boards and committee members, we appreciate your commitment to the, to the City of Fort Lauderdale, and continuing to make Fort Lauderdale the best place to live in the state of Florida, yes. R2, resolution waiving the competitive solicitation and selection processes contained in the procurement ordinance and approving an agreement for disposal services for construction and demolition debris with Waste Management. I have only one person sign up to speak for questions only, anyone have any questions? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Resolution's been introduced, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, waiving the competitive solicitation and selection processes contained in the City of Fort Lauderdale procurement ordinance for approving an agreement for disposal services for construction and demolition debris with Waste Management, Inc. of Florida, and providing for defective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R2 is now approved. R3, a resolution amending Resolution 22-88 to remove Park Lake in the 17th Street, Southeast 17th Street, cause we bridge use and occupancy agreement between the Fort Lauderdale Department of Transportation and the City of Fort Lauderdale.
Mr. Mayor, before we begin, for, for these next two items, R3 and R4, both of them, I spoke to the City Manager as well as Transportation, there's no rush on these, we tried to reach out to the Department of Transportation, some people in my district just, or wanna meet with them, could we defer both of those two items till next meeting?
So what, what's the purpose of wanting to, I mean, with the whole idea when we built the bridge, was to create some kind of respite area, you know, in the area that was, that was, you know, user friendly, and now, what, so what do they wanna convert the space to, that they wanna take away that designation?
Well, I think the resolution is to eliminate the term Park Lake, and the people in my district do, do not want to eliminate that term, they wanna keep it Park Lake, and there might be a requirement or not, we're not sure why the Department of Transportation wants to take that verbiage out, and we reached out to them, have not heard back, so we just want at least an opportunity to speak to them about that.
Phil? Phil?
Actually-
Or is it, is it Transportation?
Yeah, Ben has some information.
Sorry, sorry. Hi, Ben, can you explain a little bit about why we're doing this?
I can try my best, Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation Mobility, good evening. So my understanding of this is that in 2002, the city entered into an agreement for the use of the space, and the description at that time had the Park Lake word in there. It was a 20-year agreement that expired in 2022, and we brought it forth through the commission with kind of the same language that got approved, we forwarded it to FDOT, I believe in the summer of 2022, and, and they have opined that they will not enter into the agreement with the word Park Lake in there.
What are they planning to do there? What are they planning to do?
So Park Lake has some protected terms to it, and I think that they wanna make sure that, that space is available for future transportation needs or projects if, if needed, so it's just a cleanup item, again, right now, we don't have an active agreement with them, it is their property, and this is something that they're requiring for us to be able to continue to the use of that land.
But the only problem with that is, it was a hard-fought solution by the community in that area, that sought to take a very hard urban, you know, structure, that bridge, and create something underneath it that, that benefited pedestrians and bicyclists and, you know, people on rollerblades, to create a space that was, you know, more user-friendly. What are they gonna do with it? When you say it's for transportation purposes, that could be storage, that could be putting vehicles under there, you know, and that takes away from what I think was the intent, I was, you know, that's really, I mean, I was the Commissioner back then, and, and I don't think that was the intent, I think the community was entitled to something like this when the, when the bridge was built, so if they're saying they're not gonna sign an extension of the agreement, what is, what impact would that have on the city if they don't sign the agreement?
So my understanding, there's two items, one under the bridge, and then one along the, the right-of-way on 441, and so I think both of those are just, are, are, during the review, FDOT caught the term Park Lake, and is not a current, a common practice that they put in their agreements now, because of the Section 4F protections that come with it. Again, I, I wasn't intimately involved in this, but I, I know that, you know, if we wouldn't want to extend the agreement, I don't think they have any immediate, you know, plans to develop the parcel, to change the use of the parcel, I think it's just a cleanup item that when they were going through the, the contract, that they, they caught the Park Lake and took it out.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, can I add one thing?
Cleanup, okay.
Both of those are, are in D4, they're in my district, listen to the next one after that, and I believe this whole thing stemmed from one email, one isolated email that we received, we haven't had a chance to reach out to FDOT and, and speak to them, if it's a requirement, so be it, but we'd at least like to defer this, so we could at least speak to them and find out-
Okay. Can we defer this item then, and allow the, the Vice Mayor to, to, to have a conversation with FDOT and see?
I'll defer the same, Major, my understanding is it's not time-sensitive, we're not in an active agreement, and we've been reviewing this for, for months, so I, I don't see any urgency, but I defer to City Manager.
Okay.
Yeah, this could wait.
I'm sorry?
This can wait.
Okay, all right, so do I hear a motion to defer this item?
So moved.
Is it gonna be a time certain, or defer to what?
What do we want to do?
We should be able to do it by next year.
Month from now?
Yeah, that should be-
We can come back a month from now, yeah, absolutely.
I'll second.
Okay, but we have to figure out, we have to have a date certain, what's the second meeting in February?
That would be February 1st. The second meeting, yeah.
21.
February 21st, okay, so a motion to defer to February 21st was made by Commissioner Herbst, do I hear a second?
So, so moved, so seconded.
Okay, been seconded by the Vice Mayor.
So seconded.
Tony Spalding, are you here? Did you wanna speak on this, Tony? Are you, you're good with this, I mean, we're gonna defer so we can have a conversation with FDOT, are you okay with that? Okay.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, that motion to defer is approved, I guess we wanna do the same thing for R4?
Can I make a motion to defer R4 also?
Okay, and do I hear a second?
Second.
And that would be to February 21st, right? Mr. Spalding, you're okay on that, could you sign up for that too? Okay.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentaus?
Yes, and that motion, that resolution has now been deferred to February 21st. R5, a resolution approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and the Fort Lauderdale Downtown Development Authority for reimagining Hyzenga Park, excuse me, Hyzenga Plaza. We had several people who signed up to speak on that. When I say several, I mean about eight. What's that? And more coming. Oh, boy, another 10. So the DDA, yes. Jenny, would you like to give a little presentation on this?
I would be honored to. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Jenny Morejon, President and CEO of the Fort Lauderdale Downtown Development Authority. I'm joined by our team and our Board of Directors here tonight. We're very excited to present what we think is one of the most important projects to transform public spaces in downtown Fort Lauderdale, and we'd like to walk through the presentation of how we got here, where we're going, and what this means for our beautiful city. By way of a bit of history, because I think it's so important to really talk a little bit about how we got here, over 60 years ago, the DDA purchased dozens of acres in downtown Fort Lauderdale and contributed much of that land back to the public, and that's where we have amazing places like the Broward Center, the Museum of Art, our library, our Museum of Discovery and Science, and part of the Riverwalk. But the leaders of the DDA and the city knew at the time that downtown would become something much bigger, and so we preserved those two and a half acres of land and waited really until we came up with what the best use would be for that site. And it wasn't until the late 90s, when knowing that we wanted to bring people to downtown Fort Lauderdale, to keep employees that would otherwise leave at 5:00 PM, we created a festival park. We created a park to draw big crowds and encourage people to come to the urban core of Fort Lauderdale. In 2003, 20 years ago this month, the park was dedicated to Wayne Hyzenga, one of our signature philanthropists and visionaries of this city of downtown Fort Lauderdale, and we're so proud that that park bears his name. And this is what it looked like during the time that the DDA was deciding what to do with this land. It was vacant, the site of two amazing residential buildings are where the parking lot and the green space are today, and really, that's what downtown looked like yesterday. And over the past couple decades, the plan worked. The plan, the stage, the amphitheater, it brought in big crowds. And, you know, on any given weekend, once, maybe twice a month, it's activated with that level of people coming and enjoying downtown. But unfortunately, after almost three decades, the park's in need of some major investment. Some of the spaces within the park don't represent the world-class city that we all live in, enjoy being in, and so we believe that there's time now for an investment to this signature public space, the crown jewel in downtown Fort Lauderdale, at the center of the Riverwalk. We know there's important assets in this park that should be maintained, like the beautiful fountain and a civic lawn, but some of the elements that are dated really need some attention and really don't provide the level of activity that we think is important for our growing downtown. The Riverwalk is amazing with activity. You go down there any hour of the day and dozens upon dozens of people pushing strollers, walking dogs, carrying suitcases, getting off the water taxi. It's amazing to see. But right now, the space along the water's edge is in need of some improvement. The uses aren't necessarily connected from the water to the park, from La Solas to the water's edge and back, and we have an amazing tree, the Centennial Oak, that stands out right on the water's edge, but needs to be preserved with some improvements to the surrounding Southeast First Avenue is a cul-de-sac that comes along the eastern edge of the road. It's utilized by 100 East La Solas, the Hyatt Centric, and the River House, and in many cases, it was designed with back-of-house services. And so we believe that there's a large opportunity to improve and make a win-win situation of what's already happening on this roadway surrounding the park. So this vision of improving Hyzenga is more than a decade in the making. It started really with the vision of the downtown master plan, the Riverwalk District Plan, in 2010. In 2016, before the city took over leasing the park, the DDA actually came up with ideas at that point to improve Hyzenga Park, and that's actually the time when the DDA came up with the idea of Tunneltop Plaza and look at that beautiful asset that we're seeing come to fruition today. After advocating for the Parks Bond and bringing in national experts from around the country to give guidance on how to best improve our downtown public spaces, the DDA in 2020 set about studying the best parks throughout our country to find out what was their management model, what designs make sense, what kind of activities do you need in a growing urban center. And in late 2021, we created some early concepts with public input on how to really transform Hyzenga Park. So just to lay out the geography of what we've been looking at, we always felt it was important to really think about this space from the front door of the Museum of Art to the edge of the water, to the front door of the Hyatt Centric and the two adjacent condo buildings, and under the Andrews Avenue Bridge. And there are three ownership entities within that space. The DDA owns approximately a little over two acres, Hyzenga Park proper. The City of Fort Lauderdale has Southeast First Avenue, a public right-of-way, as well as Bouvier Park and Riverwalk, totaling about 1.2 acres, and Broward County owns Under the Bridge, another area for opportunity. During the course of 2022, we worked very hard after soliciting through a competitive process, a world-renowned design team, and a construction manager at RISK. We held dozens upon dozens of meetings to vet out 30, 60, 90% design plans, receive public input on what folks are looking for in a downtown-activated park. We built our funding plan and our business model, and part of that, we are fortunate to announce that the state of Florida has committed almost $1 million towards this park. They were original contributors to the park in 96 when we first built it and saw the value in the DDA improving this site. We established a 501(c)(3), the Hyzenga Park Foundation, which is leading a capital campaign to raise funds to go towards the contribution of construction, but also to maintain, operate, and program this park at a highest level. We hosted a public workshop recently where we had 150 members of our downtown and greater Fort Lauderdale community come out and speak with, in many ways, glowing comments, in many ways, some concerns that we're willing to address. By the end of this, or start of the summer, we look to award a guaranteed maximum price contract and begin construction on this park, all the while continuing conversations with our community. So this project has received a lot of great input. We learned what people want to see in their park, how to treat our furry friends, our young kids ages zero to 100, what kind of events people want to see, how passive, how active this park can be, the type of design, the landscaping. And from that, we came up with what we believe is an amazing public living room, your public dining room, your public office, a space where you can grab a cup of coffee, where you can sit with a friend, you can sit by yourself with a book, you can be active, you can be passive, you can experience more than a dozen rooms within the park, still with a large civic lawn. The vision is really to maintain that green open space, adding a significant amount of tree canopy, preserving the beautiful spirit of Fort Lauderdale Fountain, but bringing it back to its original beauty, and to create many more walkways throughout the park to connect, like I said, from the water's edge to La Solas, back and forth, east-west, and under the bridge. So these are some renderings that really show what these outdoor rooms would look and feel like, and how beautiful of an addition this would be in downtown. Spaces for local concessionaires, local operators to come and offer a quick bite, a cup of coffee, maybe a breakfast sandwich where you could sit and enjoy this outdoor space in downtown. Public bathroom, because it's so important, and what we learned from all these parks around the country, whether it was Dallas or Detroit, Minneapolis, Houston, Tampa, Sarasota, public bathrooms are important in a park, but even more so, it's important that they're always attended to with a full-time attendant, that they're clean, they're safe, and they're designed in a way that the public respects the space. So that is our plan with this park. As I mentioned, right now, Hyzenga is the unofficial dog park of downtown, so we have incorporated a fenced dog run and an area for off-leash activity, places for children to play, to really enjoy being outdoors. We've seen a 70% increase in the number of families with children move into downtown in the past five years. We know how important this space is. And connecting the Riverwalk, really making sure that these outdoor rooms, both on the water's edge, within the park, all seamlessly integrate while maintaining the integrity of the design of Riverwalk, our iconic red brick walkway, our lights, our banners. The final programming element, and something that is so important to the sustained success of operating and maintaining this park and bringing eyes on the park, a sense of safety and activity, is we have gone through a very deliberate and intentional vetting process to bring in a world-class operator to build on their own dime a restaurant within the park at the site of the current dilapidated bandshell. This restaurant, we believe, will be permeable from the Riverwalk to the park and really provide a sense of activity from breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and a sense of eyes on the park. Through this process, we're in final negotiations with the preferred operator, a group named Specialty Restaurants Corporation. They're a 60-year, family-owned company. They started in California, and they have 18 restaurants, many of which are on the water, in the hills, or along the runway, as they coin. A locally-known example is the Rusty Pelican on Key Biscayne, and that lease, among many of their other restaurants in their portfolio, are on city-owned property, so they've demonstrated the ability and successful ability to operate with civic partners, with the public sector, with the local community. These are some examples and renderings. The site plan still will be processed and go through the city's review process, but the footprint for the restaurant within the park is a 5,000-square-foot footprint, fairly small in this total of 3.6 acres. So we're here tonight after many discussions with our Parks Advisory Board, Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations, our Downtown Civic, the Budget Advisory Board through last summer's process, to put together a sustained partnership agreement. As I mentioned, the city has been leasing this park from the DDA, and this partnership agreement not only contributes a portion, up to a third, of the construction cost of this park, but also ensures that this park remains a park accessible to the public in perpetuity. The DDA becomes responsible for paying for and managing the operations and maintenance of these improved public spaces, and with that, the DDA has offered a restrictive covenant on this property for park use in perpetuity. And why is this important, not just to downtown, but really for our city as a whole, to have a signature park, to invest in park infrastructure? It's one of your top priorities from the commission for this fiscal year. We think that this is one of the biggest contributions to public improvements on the Riverwalk in the past 30 years. We've seen a tremendous amount of private investment, and this is really a signal that we're willing to invest in our public spaces now and forever. The city's contribution of up to $5 million and an annual contribution towards the O&M represents about a three-to-one ROI for city taxpayer dollars. We think this is a strong and positive use of city public funding. And as I've mentioned, and I think this is so important, it ensures that this land owned by the DDA remains a park use in perpetuity. So we could not be more pleased to have gone through this process with you to envision what we think will be a world-class park and rival some of the best cities in this country and truly stand out as the center of the southeast Florida region. I'm here with my board members to answer any questions that you may have, and we look forward to your support.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else from the DDA who wants to speak on this? Okay, a number of people have signed up to speak, so I'll just take them in order. I'll call three at a time so that you could be prepared to stand behind the speaker and be prepared to speak. Start with Debbie Scott Queenen. Is Debbie here? Come on, step forward, give you two minutes to speak, followed by Michelle DiVolio, followed by Steve Hudson.
First one up.
Hey, Debbie.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you very much. I'm Debbie Scott Queenen, and I reside at the River House. My comments will be limited to the need for a traffic plan for the project. I really just don't get it. How can this project have moved forward as far as it did without a detailed traffic study? And it's not like the park is in the Sahara Desert. You know, there's one road that goes into the park, and it's already heavily used by a number of commercial and passenger vehicles. From a planning perspective, I think it's imperative to visually see how the anticipated new traffic is going to ingress and egress from the site, and also how that new traffic is going to intermingle with the existing traffic. I'm all for making the improvements to the park. I think those improvements are needed, but there's a right way and a wrong way, I think, to plan and design the site, and I don't think it should be at the expense of the existing transportation users. Thank you.
So Debbie, let me ask you a question. Do you live in the River House?
I do.
So is your entrance to the River House from the street, from Southwest First Avenue?
Well, some people do. Well, remember that that, the River House uses Southeast First Avenue for the commercial vehicles, so we have--
So for the loading and unloading and stuff like that?
Yes, correct. Right. Contractors use it, UPS uses it, FedEx, Waste Management uses it for garbage pickup.
So it's not like the main entrance for the people who live there? I'm just trying to getting an idea of the, since we don't have a traffic study yet, we will, but I just want to know, what's the dynamic there? So you, as an owner, when you drive your car into the building, you come from a different--
Off of Second Avenue, correct.
Different access, right? Okay.
But we did use that street when our lobby improvements were underway, and I believe that was for at least nine months.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, followed by Steve Hudson, followed by Denise Pont.
Good evening.
Good evening. I live across from the park at 100 East La Solas, and I wanted to express my strong support for the DDA's park renovation plans. I think it's a well-thought-out plan that attempts to address residents' concerns regarding possible noise and traffic increases. The current park has continued to deteriorate over the past few years, and it is horribly maintained. If keeping a restaurant, a small, putting a small restaurant there without live music or an outdoor bar, in my view, is a really good way to mitigate possible increases in the noise level that I know is concerns for some people, and when they have events there, it's really loud, and there's tons of people that come in at one time, they put the tents in, they rip up the ground, and they go out, there's trash, grease, food everywhere. So a small restaurant that's well-run is going to be a welcome change in that area. There remain some, I guess, small traffic concerns, but I think the DDA seems to be working to come up with solutions to mitigate the traffic increases, and I believe that those issues can be resolved based on representations that the DDA has made, different ways that they can do maybe an extra curb, you know, cut for the valet, or perhaps they have the valet let off on the opposite side of La Solas where they're going to park the cars in the municipal lot, and they could even have golf carts that just shuttle people down if it's like raining or something. So in my view, having a small restaurant is a small price to pay to have a world-class park that's maintained to high standards in keeping that space green in perpetuity. So for these reasons, I hope, I'm hoping that the commission unanimously approves the requested funding for the DDA's plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. Steve Hudson, followed by Denise Pont, followed by Kurt Zimmerman.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Steve Hudson, I wear a lot of hats. I was the DDA Chair last year as we were going through this process. Currently, the Chair of the Hyzenga Park Foundation, and that's what I'm going to speak to at the moment. The foundation, as Jenny has said so eloquently, is set out to raise $5 million in private funding for this, for the park. We have had great conversations with many people that are interested in funding this park, right? So they understand that this is actually a municipal park, but they're willing to put their private funds into this park because they believe in this park so strongly. The restaurant, as was mentioned, is an integral part of this as well, and I really hope that the commission looks at all of this and, please, balance all sides, but understand, I mean, this park is not just for a few, this is for everyone. This is for the 25,000 residents that we have downtown now, for the 5 million visitors we get a year, and so I hope that we can count on your support. Thank you.
All right, Steve, could you just wait a second?
Yes.
I received a memo from the Downtown Civic Association, and there was lengthy, lengthy letters, like a page and a half, and there were some main concerns that they had, and I shared some of those concerns. One of the concerns is about noise from emanating from the restaurant. Could you tell us a little bit about the operation of this restaurant that's anticipated? Is there going to be entertainment on the outside of the restaurant with music, or is it all going to be inside the restaurant?
As yet to be determined. What I should have also mentioned is that one of the other hats I wear is I'm on the Noise Ordinance Task Force--
Right.
--I was appointed to by the commission. So as it relates to noise, that task force is putting together a comprehensive citywide noise ordinance, and we have a consultant, we have a meeting next week, I believe. So there are, there will be measures in place that the city can enforce, but as the DDA, as the owner of the park and those that will regulate that lease, it's very important for us to be, for the restaurant, to be good neighbors and good stewards of that area to the condos and the hotel that's there. So, you know, it is not anticipated that this will be a lively, a raucous place with outdoor music until all hours. We have some of those in the city that are, is causing problems.
Right.
That's why there's the task force for the noise ordinance. So--
It's just not going to be one of those places, right?
It is, it is not, and as Jenny said, we were extremely focused on finding the right operator that knows how to do restaurants well, and these, this firm is second to none truly. We really, you know, we really walked into this-- And this firm is second to none truly. We really, you know, we really locked into this agreement with these guys.
All right, so then to answer the question then, so maybe Jenny, you can help out. So the agreement that you're going to enter into with the restaurant operator is going to very specifically state there can be no outside music and no entertainment on the outdoors. Is that correct?
Yes. One of the prohibited uses, well, prohibited uses nightclub, concert hall, disco, all of this. But more importantly, to your point, no DJ or live music show be permitted in any outdoor seating areas. They may have ambient music and that sort of thing, but no, no loud music.
So ambient music, like up to, you know, it's, I mean, everyone has a different definition of ambient. It's meant to be low-volume, low-volume background music that you can talk over. In other words, we don't want loud music outdoors at all. So maybe in that agreement, we can put in a certain decibel level that it cannot be, right? Because let's be respectful, the people that live in 100 Las Olas as well as the River House. No one wants to see or hear noise travel up the side of the building because people can hear the same thing on the fifth floor as they can on the 25th floor. So I just want to, we're going to be respectful of that, correct?
Yes. Yes, but I'm going to let Jenny.
Okay.
I think one of our other board members, known commercial landlord who operates dozens of restaurants downtown, Charlie Ladd, has signed up and would like to probably speak more.
Well, he'll have his turn. All right.
I don't know if you would like that now or at some point, but I just wanted to recognize that.
Okay, all right. I don't mean to target you, but you're the easier target.
That's fair. I got a bullseye right here, so.
Well, Mayor, can I just add on that just so I understand what we're talking to? So as I understand that, that sort of refers to, we're not going to have weddings on the rooftop with, you know, amplified music and everybody doing the electric slide. Is that kind of what we're referring to?
Hey, don't take that away from us.
I know, that's your favorite dance, but, you know.
Not the Macarena, I hope.
Are they still doing the electric slide? That is, yes, that is the intent. I know that, and Jenny did mention, you know, the programming of the actual restaurant, they have not designed it as yet. And so we do have the opportunity to say, okay, we allow this, we allow that. And so the depiction now has a rooftop. But again, the intent there is, you know, not to have amplified music. Again, to be good stewards of the park as well as great neighbors to the condos and the hotel.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's it for now.
That's fair.
Thank you.
Charlie, next.
Thank you. Denise, followed by Kurt Zimmerman, followed by, well, Mr. Millage is just here for questions, right? Or you want to make a statement? Okay, okay. Hi, Denise.
Hi. I'm Denise Pont, and I live in 100 East Las Olas. And I wanted to just strongly voice my support for the project. We moved here a year ago, understanding that the park was going to be beautified because right now, looking at my backyard, literally, it's not very beautiful at all. And there are things going on in that park that no one would want in their backyard. As residents who overlook the park from our home, and we use the park daily, we feel that the current condition is unacceptable. We understand that there are reservations regarding the restaurant and the traffic and it may bring to an already busy first street. We feel that these concerns are not insurmountable, however, and should not be grounds to completely dispose of the entire plan. Currently, with the city managing the grounds, it's a mess. It's the softball teams go out, or the kickball teams go out. The next morning, I can't bring my dog out into the park anymore because it is so dirty that all of that comes in with my dog. I think that it'll be much better managed if it means a restaurant is going to be there and funds from the restaurant are going to allow us to keep that park beautiful, to maintain it in the state that it should be. I'm all for it. I see the new park as my new backyard. And I'm really excited for the new restaurant, to be honest with you. I'm excited to sit on a rooftop and look out at the boats going by. Because right now, with the current situation, I can't even sit in the benches that are out underneath some of the pergolas because there are homeless people out there. They're defecating, they're urinating, you know. I can't sit there and enjoy my own backyard. So we are in full support, and we hope that you unanimously support the project. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Kurt Zimmerman, followed by John Millage, followed by Charlie Ladd.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm here as a resident, resident of Rio Vista, Commissioner Sherman's district. And over the years, I've lived in Fort Lauderdale for 30 years. Over the years, my family and I, with our kids, have enjoyed the park. I've noticed that it has deteriorated, and when I was very excited to hear of these plans to improve it. And it has all the elements to appeal to all ages, visitors, residents alike, all segments of our community. So I won't repeat the benefits that Jenny so well articulated and the other speakers, but I did want to, as a resident, express my strong support. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. John Millage, followed by Charlie Ladd, followed by Dev Motwani. Is Dev here? Oh, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor. John Millage, General Counsel, Downtown Development Authority. I just want to say a couple of things. I think the nearby neighbors have legitimate concerns about having some issues not repeated. There are some restaurants in the area that have done things, noise, could be valet issues. And unfortunately, the only remedies they have really is code enforcement, and that's the remedy that's, you know, in the code. What we have here is two different levels, additional levels of security that they have. The first is that we have a downtown development board managing that restaurant. And you have a board of developers, several which manage, and one of the members manages some 30, up to 30 restaurants with experience not having these issues. So we have that experience. And then the second level is you, because you appoint the DDA. You pointed a member tonight. And, you know, if we don't manage this property, then several things happen. I mean, no, it's never happened that way, but you make your concerns known to us. So those are two different levels that if the residents just aren't aware of that, just practically speaking, and I just want to, you know, make everybody aware that this is a different situation than those. And the DDA is not a profit-making entity either. We want to make sure that this is run properly for everybody. And so we have those interests in mind, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ladd, followed by Mr. Motwani, followed by William Barrett.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As a DDA member and a commercial landlord on a number of restaurants in downtown Fort Lauderdale, I've got the honor or the short straw to be kind of the lead on the lease negotiations with this restaurant. We brought in an attorney that's done a number of restaurant leases in downtown, a guy named Peter Tunis, very experienced in negotiating this lease. And we've got, I don't know, 20-something years of dealing with restaurants in downtown from Planta to Louis Bossi to Doc B's to Foxy Brown's to Shuck and Dive, and on and on. So I've lived personally through the drama of a bad actor. And I've seen bad actors in downtown that had to be dealt with, with landlords that were not effective in doing it. The concept that we're using in this lease is that the landlord has the authority to deem that the noise is too high. And we have the power to call the tenant, and if they don't adjust the volume, they lose the ability to operate that music. It's a draconian penalty, but it works. So we use this on other restaurants. When I call or our staff calls and says, hey, it's too loud, turn it down, they turn it down. We don't need to argue about decibels. We don't need to have committees.
But wouldn't it be appropriate to have an objective standard, a decibel level, so that they...
The difficulty...
No surprise, you know, when they have a bar mitzvah there, that they're not going to say, hey, you know, you're singing too loud.
Hey, why are you picking on bar mitzvahs?
Oh, because I love bar mitzvahs.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Mayor, the difficulty with that is you're always trying to prove it after the fact. And the ability of the landlord to say, guys, turn it down, and get a response is invaluable. And that could have, if that strength was there, for instance, with Salt Seven, it could have been resolved immediately. And that's what we want to have the ability to do. The DDA is here as a positive force. We try to do good things. As you know, the money for the DDA comes from commercial property owners, and we're there to try to make the downtown better. So this restaurant and the park is about making the downtown better. We think with our resources, our capital and expertise, other board members as well, operate all kinds of venues downtown, we can help make First Avenue function better. We can look at ideas, for instance, trash. All the dumpsters are rolled out of River House several times a week. There's other properties in downtown, for instance, Las Olas, behind El Camino. They pooled together into the compactor that serviced all those businesses. Well, maybe we can do that and reduce the trips. Maybe we can create some parking facilities where those service vehicles can park during the week. So with the money and the capital being spent, it's not a negative thing. We think we can make this better, and we can make it more inviting and not let First Avenue be basically a service alley. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Motwani, followed by William Barrett, followed by Melinda Boker.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Dev Motwani, DDA board member and resident of Las Olas area. We've talked a lot about the restaurant. I think Charlie just addressed a lot of those points. Agree there are some fair concerns, and I think they are being addressed and thoughtfully addressed. And there's certainly an opportunity on traffic going forward with the site plan process to improve in that regard. But I think if you look at the intent of the selection of the operator, it really tells you that those items were thought about in terms of noise and being a good neighbor and operating in a public facility, having that operational expertise, you know, focus on brunch and lunch and dinner, a family-oriented place as opposed to a louder, more raucous place. I think the intent, if you look at the operator, is very clear that those concerns were taken into account because we were very thoughtful through this process. It was a public process. And I can tell you, each member, when we looked at the programming of the park, we thought what it would be like to be a neighbor in the downtown. And so when you think about all the components, whether it's the dog park or the opportunity areas where the kids can play, the seating in the shade, whether you want to come down and read a book, or whether you want to grab a coffee with a friend, when you look at the great lawn or the reimagined fountain, there's just so much, so many spaces in here that are really just going to be great on a day-to-day basis for all residents of the downtown and particularly those within walking distance. The restaurant component is an important component for financial reasons, but also for activating the park to ensure that it's safe and it's clean, both through the revenue as well as the activity. I spend a lot of time down in Miami. I've been to the Rusty Pelican many times, usually for brunch, actually, and mostly with my family. But there's also something like Smith &amp; Walensky, and if you see what that does to South Point Park, it's not a raucous place. It creates activity, and that's really, those are types of visions that we had here when we programmed this. So it was a very public process. Obviously, all of our meetings were open to the public in the sunshine. And we really took that into account when programming and also, like I said, choosing the operator. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barrett, followed by Melinda, followed by Debra Steiner.
Hello, and thank you. I assume this works. Okay, first of all, I want to say that as a resident here for about 13 years, I coach. I coach in Holiday Park. And I'm familiar with, I've done this for years, I'm familiar with a wide span of parks in Broward County. Holiday Park, by an order of magnitude, is a best-maintained, best-operated park anywhere. Only grass infield, by the way, for baseball teams in the whole area, and it's perfect. And the Parks and Recreation Center's guys, I congratulate them. Not only that, the way they treat and take care of kids. It's just an outstanding facility. So I just want, the only reason I'm saying that is Fort Lauderdale knows how to do it right. They've proved that to me for years consistently. The other issue is, I spent a career proposing deals and doing deals in this magnitude and more. What strikes me with this is lack of specificity, lack of commitment, lack of yes answers with quantified substance behind it, lack of no answers with qualified substance behind it, lack of if this happens, this is exactly what will happen to contain that, by who, by when, and how it will be permanently fixed. All right? The other part that strikes me about this is the ambiguity of the financing and how the financing is dependent and operations is dependent upon this ambiguous financing. I could tell you that some organizations, such as I was in, will look at this deal for five to 10, 15 minutes, say, this sounds really good, go develop it, and better come back with tons of details because if you don't, you won't get another meeting. And that's the way this works. And I think you guys are on that route, and I implore you to really dig in deep because this is the center of Fort Lauderdale. It's very expensive. It's very visible. And when the funding criterion is amidst of 150 restaurants and there's one more, all right, and we have to have a certain hurdle before you'll ever get any funding, it sounds to me like that's something that should be checked out, and it should have a really hard class, hard fix performance statement about how that's going to happen, how it's going to be operated, how it's going to be executed, how you can measure it, and what's going to happen if it doesn't, backed up by those people proposing it with their own personal guarantees and what-if statements if that doesn't happen. That's all I'm saying, and I appreciate what you're doing. I congratulate what you're doing, and I fully support improving that area down there. But I think care is everything here from every aspect of it. So I thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much.
And by the way, that care is missing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Melinda. You can take three minutes because you're the president of the Civic Association.
Oh, really?
We can give you four.
Actually, I may not need that much time to distill it, but thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I did send you guys a letter earlier. That was on behalf of our board. We have a 10-member Downtown Fort Lauderdale Civic Association Board, and I am the current president. So at the risk of sounding a little bit pedantic, I am going to take portions of my letter that I just wrote to you, and this is on behalf of my board. In summary, we are in support but with stipulations. With regards to item R5 on the City Commission agenda, the Downtown Fort Lauderdale Civic Association Board would encourage the City Commission to take this opportunity to ensure that the downtown central green space, known as Heisinga Park, will remain a park in perpetuity. Thus, we would in principle support the interlocal agreement between the city and the DDA to include the use of up to $5 million of city funding to pay for only improvements to park area up to one-third of the total cost with the following stipulations that may require a change to the agreement's wording or an addendum. Stipulation 1 has been discussed by a few people, although I'm being more specific about it. It's concerns regarding southeast First Avenue traffic circulation on that dead-end road. And I do think it's important for commission and the audience to realize this is a dead-end road. It's a bit different from other thoroughfares in the city that have had valet added. Our suggestion is that the Heisinga Restaurant vehicular traffic should not enter the roundabout at the south end of southeast First Avenue. This will require traffic study and further research, but it could potentially be facilitated with a pedestrian drop-off point or unloading area that will cut into park space on the northeast side of the park and reroute the traffic back to Las Olas away from the dead-end roundabout. Three-point turns are already commonplace under current conditions within the roundabout, and the new restaurant is expected to encroach on current space in the current roundabout. Our second stipulation is with regards to noise from the new proposed restaurant that will be entering a 20-year ground lease. The city should ensure that resident concerns regarding music and other ambient noises coming from the new restaurant can be addressed upfront, either by wording added to the agreement or by stipulations on outdoor closing times. In making these recommendations to enter into the agreement with the stipulations noted, the Downtown Civic Board wants to bring emphasis to the following key points. Heisinga Park is currently owned by the DDA. The revised wording in the interlocal agreement dated today includes a park covenant deed restriction in paragraph 7E, Covenant for Park Use, whereby the DDA agrees in covenants to keep Heisinga Park less than accepting the restaurant use as publicly accessible park for perpetuity. This is a very important change, as the previous agreement dated December 20 only agreed to keep it as a park for a minimum of 20 years. We would encourage the city to rezone the park as P or add a park easement as an addendum if deemed feasible. A few other points I will just bring out in closing is that downtown green space is lacking. This is a major concern for downtown residents as well as those in surrounding neighborhoods. Of the parks downtown that actually have green space, Stranahan Park is, its model is not really making it accessible to users. There's also a large transient population that is sometimes there. Smoker Park is really meant for more passive use, and the wonderful Riverwalk Linear Park is... is more of a thoroughfare. So as people have stated, this is our central downtown park, our main park. In closing, I'll just say the board supports City of Fort Lauderdale investment in public green space and encourages the city to take all reasonable steps to preserve current downtown green space in perpetuity and in a consistently well-maintained state where it can be enjoyed by a large majority of residents and visitors to downtown.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You make some very good points, Melinda, and I think, after everyone speaks, we'll be able to address them. Debra Steiner, followed by Alan Hooper, followed by Brian Donaldson.
I also am part of the downtown Civic Association. I am a resident of downtown and a local Realtor downtown. And I did attend last week the presentation that the DDA made. They did reference Bryant Park in New York and as a former New Yorker who worked one block from Bryant Park, that they've consulted with the people who did create the enhancement of Bryant Park. I am a huge supporter of this green space for the downtown area. When they did it with Bryant Park and they created the restaurants and the chairs and the bathrooms that were supervised, it became a clean, safe place that was very much enjoyed by everybody in the local neighborhood. And right now, we don't have any green space that I would want to sit, bring my dog, or I don't have children, but you bring children to sit and relax, that I feel that's safe and I feel that's clean. And I feel this is a great amenity to everybody in the downtown area and the surrounding areas to be able to walk to and actually sit, relax, and then walk back home wherever that is. So, big support of this.
All right, very good. Thank you. Alan Hooper, followed by Brian, followed by-
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Mayor. So, you know, being a native and being one of those people that was raucous at, at this park when they had the festivals, you know, it truly was visionary by our founders of the DDA when they held back this piece of property 60 years ago because had they not, we might have something that mirrors what's on the other side of First Avenue and we might have 350 units on that site and we might have a traffic problem on First Avenue. But instead, we are looking to do differently than the, than FDOT. We're actually looking to use the words park-like and we actually will put this park in perpetuity and avoid anything like a 35 or 40-story building in the future. We believe that this is one of the most beautiful projects that, that has been thought of in the last several years and I'm proud of the DDA. I'm proud of Jenny and the staff of what they're doing and, and the restaurant that we're bringing, I would have to say, Steve, it's second to only one restaurant group in Fort Lauderdale. So, I really, I hope you guys will definitely-
Are you going to bring music back to the fountain?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to bring music back to the fountain?
I'm actually, I was the guy that threw soap in that fountain, actually. But I'm not doing that anymore because we're going to renovate this park and it's going to be beautiful.
Station limitations is still running.
So, so thank, thank you very much and I, I hope you guys will support it and we're looking forward to really improving this thing in a world-class fashion. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. It's my understanding that this item is to, is to allocate the first, the first portion of a $5-plus million contribution to the enhancement of this park. And in no way is any of this money going towards the building or the maintenance or operation of the proposed restaurant as part of the design scheme, correct?
That is correct. That is in section two and it, it reads that the city shall contribute toward the capital funding of the project as set forth in Exhibit Two, except that such funds, such funding shall not exceed one-third of the overall project costs excluding costs associated with the restaurant. So the restaurant is not included in this contribution.
Okay, I just want, I want to make sure everyone's clear on that. Mr. Donaldson. Followed by Jim Ellis, followed by Jeffrey Chirkus.
Good evening, Mayor. Good ma, good evening, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. You just stole some, some of my thunder in regards to, I'm the Chair of the Budget Advisory Board and I wanted to share with everyone in the audience tonight and the new Commissioners as to the process that DDA and the city through our Budget Advisory Board went through over the past year. When they first came to request the funding, our board was very skeptical and we, some of the issues that we had have been overcome and are reflective in the agreement that is in front of you. The first one of our conditions was is that none of this public money would be used toward any type of a private restaurant or entity. It would only go toward capital improvements. And we also wanted to make sure that in addition to a cap of $5 million, there's also a cap of one-third. So if the money, if the dollars change in the, in the project and it came in at 12 million, then you're only on the, we're only on the hook for 4 million. So we put in the percentage and the total dollar amount. We had a lot of discussion and found out that we could not be using the park bonds because of the fact that the park bond, so those were one of the things that came up. And I know that I've heard that in some of your district outreach, et cetera, because of the fact that this was not in the original agreement when we put the park bond out for the vote. So that was not on, on the plate. So we, we looked at, at those and then the next question was what happens when the DDA ends in 2030? So we looked at it and we looked at really this as your Budget Advisory Board, looking at numbers and return on investments for our taxpayers, which is our number one commitment. So we did not get into the details on the restaurant, the details on the noise, et cetera. We knew that there were other groups and other advisory boards, et cetera, and there was a process as to going through the approval process for a restaurant and that was really not our task. It was really about protecting the assets. So if anyone is not aware, if the state legislature does not renew the DDA, then all of the assets, including that parcel, along with the liabilities, et cetera, come back to the city and to the city taxpayers. So when we discovered that, we felt even more confident moving forward. Our biggest issue that we had was whether or not this was going to become a park for, I can't say that word very clearly.
Perpetuity?
Perpetuity, but forever. So that was really our biggest hurdle and we know that in the December agreement, that wording was not in there. And I can stand here tonight and tell you that the, that the Budget Advisory Board is, is in support. Both of the appointees to Budget Advisory Board from District Four were both in favor of that and we looked at it as a holistic for the total city and we felt that it was a very good three-to-one return on investment and we can't say that in a lot of green spaces throughout this city. So on that, if there are any questions-
Before you leave, I mean, I'm going to have quite a lot to say on this at the end, but one thing I, while you're up here, I don't know if you or Charlie can answer this. In nine years, if the DDA sunsets, I know the DDA is signing the lease with the restaurant. If the DDA sunsets, who is the lessor at that particular point? The city?
That would be more of a legal question, but the way it was explained to me as the Chair.
Thank you, Brian.
If you want to give that, if you want to give that opinion, go ahead. No, under the, under the Charter, under the Charter, all assets and liability, you know, inure to the city. So you, you would, you'd be the lessor.
Okay.
By law. You're the, you'll, you'll be the DDA.
Any further questions?
Any further questions for the Chair?
Any further questions, Brian? Okay. Thank you for creating that, that scenario of, of it, of the money going only for park and investment and only up to one-third of the total for the project. We appreciate that because I think that gives a lot of people the comfort level that they feel that, that this money isn't going to support the private aspect of this.
Well, we looked at it as a capital improvement and what does the public have? Because it's public taxpayers and that's what we were looking at.
Right.
And the original ratio, we didn't like, so everyone, I think, came together on this and I think it's a good thing in front of you tonight and I hope that you support it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ellis, long time no see, followed by Jeffrey Chirkus, followed by Bo Lativir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners and congratulations to the new Commissioners. You know, I first like to thank you for your support over the last eight years and I guess I'm officially retired as of half hour ago. So, thank you. You know, I think the only nodes that I'm hearing tonight are people who are concerned about traffic noise in their street and, you know, successful downtowns have traffic noise and street issues. And, and we are trying to be a successful downtown and, you know, it, there are regulations and codes that are worked with in other successful cities. And, you know, I believe you're doing that now with the Noise Ordinance Code and, and obviously as we build more buildings, there are going to be more people. So that's just part of a successful downtown and, and, you know, if people's goals are to not be around traffic and noise, then, you know, there's the galt. Anyway, you know, the, the, obviously there's a, a strong demand for good restaurants. The good restaurants downtown or the five stars or whatever, they're full, it's hard to get into and so there is the demand that is there. And, you know, I'd like for the Commission to think about what could happen with this property. When I got to the DDA eight years ago, there were renderings that were being floated around to the DDA members with a, I think at the time it was a 30-story building that was built above the property. So they were looking at keeping it as a park but building a building above it. You know, the, I'll, I'll wrap up soon, the, the current board is unanimously in favor of doing this. Previous board, I wouldn't say it was when I got on. The property is worth north of $50 million, easy. So the DDA has a lot of options and I don't think you want the DDA to look at other options with this. The current park is not safe and usable and it's in the best locations in downtown. The current plans the DDA is offering makes this park safe, usable, and an amazing asset for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chirkus, followed by Bo Lativir, and followed by Camelia. I'm not going to pronounce this correctly. Is Camelia here? Okay. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Jeff Chirkus, President of the Board at River House, representing the board and representing what we believe to be most of the residents at River House who have voiced enormously their concerns to us. I'd like to start off by saying that we are not against the reimagination of the park. Your plans are exciting. The refresh is exciting, but we have concerns and our concerns are centered around the restaurant and what the restaurant brings with it, noise, as has already been voiced tonight and will be voiced by others, and traffic concerns. Obviously, the DDA is sensitive and understands that, that there will be traffic concerns and in trying to address these traffic concerns, they actually asked us if we would consider rejiggering our trash operations to diminish our trash operations from three days a week to one day a week. So we did an internal study and what we found was that to achieve that, it would cost us $250,000 more in our annual budget. We would lose, we would have to put a major compactor in our receiving area, which would cause us to lose a third of our receiving area and it would bring an odor and vermin problem into our receiving area that we don't currently have. And to get around that odor problem, we'd have to leave our doors open, which brings a security issue. So that's not really practical for us in the least. They, in their plans, they are, they also asked us if we would consider rejiggering our valet operations. You asked Mr. Mayor earlier about what our entrance is and, and Debbie Keenan did reply correctly, our main entrance is on Second Ave, La Solas Way, but we have a one-fifth of our residents utilizing the rear entrances along southeast First Avenue into our G Lot and our S Lot where our valet also has a significant number of oversized and transient guest parking spaces. So 20% of our valet operations go in and out of First Avenue. We have seen our, our valet, our valet response times increase tremendously since 100 East La Solas opened up with their valet operations impacting southeast First Avenue already as well as Eddie V's, which you all know about affecting our front valet. So this only adds to the problem. As well, the restaurant pad is designed to recover or cannibalize 30% of the roadway surface of the cul-de-sac, which would, which would necessarily and obviously impact further the operations of River House on southeast First Avenue outside of our main staging area, our receiving area. This would be intolerable for our operations and only create chaos with the addition of a valet operation. So with that, we wrote you, I wrote you, in April of last year, April the 18th, to be exact, Mr. Mayor and the Commissioners that were seated at that time, we wrote you and we expressed our concerns and we asked for a traffic study. The DDA responded in 24 hours with a promise that they would have a traffic study by June of 2022. That has not yet happened. Why hasn't it happened? They've spent $1 million developing this park, developing the plans for this park. Why hasn't a $10,000 to $15,000 parking valet impact study been a necessary component of this planning? Well, it's obvious. They're concerned about the answer. So with that, I would ask that you stipulate, if you're going to fund this thing, that you stipulate that a parking study be done at the outset and that it prove that, that a valet operation for this restaurant can be supported on southeast First Avenue, that we, that you stipulate as well that the court not be impacted, the, the surface area of the court not be impacted by the restaurant pad, which would negatively impact the turnaround capability, the staging capabilities of the cul-de-sac and emergency vehicle operations, ingress and egress out of that, out of that area. And thirdly, that any valet operation, if it's proven that a traffic impact study proves that a valet operation can be supported, that such traffic, that such valet operation be stipulated to have a turnaround, a three-point turnaround area to direct traffic back out of the valet operation, out of the, the southeast First Avenue the way it should happen, instead of forcing that traffic into an already congested cul-de-sac. Thank you very much. Thanks for your indulgence.
You're welcome. Can I ask a question? Is the city committing, where are these cars going that are valeted? Is the city committing to, is the city committing to any particular space that we own to allow for the cars to be parked?
So that will be determined at time of the application. If the proposal includes a valet, a request for a valet operation, it will certainly have to go through that process and we will make sure that all these assurances are secured. There's also, there was that question too, and we have a parking garage very close that can provide parking and we would have to have an agreement in place also for that parking to be used for this operation.
Right, but what if, what if we have other plans for that parking garage? Are we going to be stymied because we have a parking arrangement with this particular restaurant? I mean, that's a question that has to be asked at some point, but I would not be in favor of committing the city. We already have committed the city to the north parking lot and I would hate to think that we're going to have our hands tied with regard to the south parking lot, which would make, which would make- make, which would make those parking buildings, which we could never redevelop those sites in perpetuity, which would, which would, I think, would interfere with some development plans that are, that are being contemplated downtown. Did you have a response to that?
Yes, I think as the manager mentioned, this agreement does not have a final site plan that will go through a DRC process with the floor plans, an orientation of the building, a separate process. And in addition to the DRC application is a valet parking agreement and a permit that's required through the city. The restaurant operator wants to ensure successful operation experience for not only their customers, but the environment down there to run. So, whether they consider the city parking garage, and there's a time, you know, certain on that, there's many other users of the city parking garage that have a definitive timeframe and term with that, I think that can be looked at. There's other private garages in the area, there's surface parking lots. We have gone through the due diligence process of analyzing the existing conditions down there. One of the efforts that are underway in partnership with Ben Rogers and County Transportation is looking at the intersections at First Avenue and La Solas to make them safer for both pedestrians and cars. So, that's step one, the DRC process, and then the valet permit operation, to really look at how to try to create a win-win situation out of there, but we're not there yet. This funding agreement tonight, and this partnership agreement allows us to take that next step, to really analyze that. So, the traffic analysis that we spoke of last summer was really to get to a point where we can have final plans proposed by the restaurateur to understand all of this and then work through that review process.
Okay, but the, but the bottom line is, you know, I would never be in favor of any kind of parking arrangement that commits the city in perpetuity to allowing the operation to use the city parking garage, which would prevent the city from ever attempting to redevelop that site, as we've been talking about for quite a little while now. So, just, just a heads up.
We'll express that to the operator and understand that there's options out there, and private operators have to look for those spaces that are going to best serve their operations and clients.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, could I just ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
I'm just curious about something. I, I know this is obviously not being contemplated, but I just want a more holistic picture of this. What is this parcel currently zoned for? What could be built there today?
So, the zoning is RAC CC, City Center is the CC designation. It's also in the downtown master plan as the character known, character area known as City Center, same, same name type. What that means is it's anticipated for, and when the zoning amendments were done in the late 90s to create these RAC districts, the CC is the highest intense zoning district in our entire city of Fort Lauderdale. Unlimited height, no parking requirements. It encourages active uses at the ground level for all uses, residential or commercial. It really anticipated the highest intense urban core of the city of Fort Lauderdale. So, what is permitted there is really what the highest and best value is, so as long as it goes through a process to show conformance with the downtown master plan.
So, we could have effectively another 100 East La Solas sitting on that site?
We could have what the FAA would permit in terms of height and in terms of...
Right, which I'm seeing is almost everything right now. Everything that I've seen, they've pretty much gone ahead and permitted 500-foot-tall buildings up and, up and down the river. So, and, and if we had that, I presume the parking would come down Southeast First Street to get into that building. Would that be correct?
Development sites by law use public right-of-way to access their ingress and egress. So, when you have La Solas Boulevard and First Avenue, those are your two public right-of-ways that are next to this parcel. So, those would be, you know, it would be La Solas, which as we've seen along La Solas from really Andrews Avenue all the way east, there's not ingress and egress on our, our beloved La Solas, so it's the side streets that would need to provide that ingress/egress.
Okay, thank you.
Beau Lativere, followed by Camelia, and followed by, pardon me, Ron Castillo. Are you Beau?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. The, my name is Beau Lativere. I'm, I am also a resident of the La Solas River House, and I want to make two brief comments on the noise. One is that the things that worry me is that, well, a statement such as "trust us," it'll be great. That's the intent. The intent is that it won't be that loud, but those things normally do not work out. I, I like what you said earlier, if, if the, if you don't want it to be loud, they said we will not have amplified music, then put it in the agreement and, and it'll be done. To, to, code enforcement is great, and, and, but we have recently, the noise ordinance said no loud cars and, and loud music in cars and motorcycles. I hate to tell you, but I heard several, you know, every day. So, I mean, it's, it's, the intent is great, but it needs to be written in the contract. The other thing I wanted to address is that I spent a lengthy career in hospitality management, and the last 10 years as, as an executive of a valet parking company that operated valet operations from coast to coast in restaurants and hotels, and a valet, valet operation in that restaurant is, is going to be impossible. You mentioned the Conga Land on the rooftop. It won't be on the rooftop, there's a whole second level in the restaurant that accommodate weddings for 200 people. I want you to imagine 100 cars coming in, 80 cars for the wedding, and another 30, 40 cars for the restaurant that have to then go across La Solas, where there would be a traffic light, and, and park three blocks away. How much staff that would take, how many people are going to be in hold on this narrow First Avenue? If, if this was presented to us as, as a valet operator, we would pass on the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Camelia, followed by Ron Castillo, followed by Debbie Levy. Camelia, how do you sp, how do you pronounce your last name?
It's kind of difficult. It's Crasian.
Okay.
I know it looks off. Crasian?
Crasian.
It's Romanian. But hello, everyone, my name is Camelia. I'm here as a resident to express my strong support for the project and really commend the DDA for the amount of thought that they injected into the plan in general. I've lived in this city for almost five years now and have really enjoyed seeing it grow and develop over time with me. But as my colleagues and neighbors do the same issues, such as walkability of the city and the lack of green spaces, really just keep popping up. I spent the afternoon actually reaching out to almost 40, 40 to 50 friends of mine, residents. We kind of all live downtown within the La Solas Center to get feedback for you all, and received comments such as, "We need more green spaces." "I do not want another high-rise going up." "The green spaces in the city are dwindling fast, and the city needs more spaces like this," referencing the park, "not less." "We have an abundance of apartments to rent, but nowhere to see any grass or greenery." "I recently saw three separate large green spaces leveled to make space for massive apartment complexes. All I hear is constant construction noise. I have nowhere to walk my dog and no grass to even look at near my condo anymore. As a Fort Lauderdale resident, I would love to see a green space preserved instead of demolished for once. This park would be a great spot for locals to exercise and enjoy, and the beautiful scenery with their family and pets." So, we're all here today because we kind of share the same common thought and goal, which is centered around the appreciation for the city. But over the past 10 years, and even more so in the last three, we've definitely seen an influx of young professionals and families that are in dire need of amenities like this park to match the rapid residential and commercial growth of the city. Lots of people have benefited from this growth. I mean, we've seen property prices double within the past 10 years, but we have to think about molding a city that's going to be passed down for generations. And although I'm slightly disappointed that this room is not full of faces representative of where the city is going, I have faith that the Commission has the best interests of not only the city mind, but all of its residents, not a select few. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Ron Castillo, followed by Debbie Levy, followed by Stan Eichelbaum. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Ron Castillo. I'm the retired Chief Justice of the Pennsylvania Supreme Court, a court I served on for 21 years. I'm also retired District Attorney of the City of Philadelphia. And that's, in my retirement, I said I'm going to Fort Lauderdale, because I lived, I'm probably more of a Floridian than anybody here, because I was born in 1944, when my dad was down in Opa-locka learning to fly B-17s. So, I know about city parks. In Philadelphia, we have four of the finest parks downtown, four of them, and they have no commercial things on them at all. They have the same things that this Hyzinga Park has, fairs, things like that. And it's these parks, also, we have the largest municipal park in the world, Penny Pack Park, and there are no commercial activities on Penny Pack Park, the largest park in the world. And these parks are important. You know, I don't live next to Hyzinga, but I go around it all the time. I see the fairs they have and chili cook-offs and things like that. And it is getting tremendous amount of use by the citizens of Philadelphia, I mean, sorry, Fort Lauderdale. And, and I'm not sure we really need another restaurant in Fort Lauderdale, and I would be a guest giving any of this land at all to a, a commercial agency. And why should we, and I'm a taxpayer, I live in La Solas Grand, and that's where I retired to, and we've had noises and we've had all that, and we haven't had much, we have had the YOLO Place and the Salt Seven, and the owners, when we complained to them, they said, "Well, why don't you just move out of the city of Fort Lauderdale?" I said, "Well, that's not what I'm going to do, and that's not what you should do, and you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be giving any of these parks." I mean, they're, they're the things that make cities great. How about Central Park in New York City? If they didn't have that, New York City'd be in real trouble. So, I just don't understand why this very famous restaurant company in 60 or 70, whatever they have, why do they need $5 million of taxpayers' money? And I am a taxpayer. Why do they need $5 million for such a successful organization? Why don't they fund that themselves? You know, and I'm not going to speak to all the problems that the 100, 100 and those folks have, but I would be against sending any taxpayer dollars...
Mr. Castillo, Mr. Castillo, I, I think it was established a few minutes ago that none of that money is going towards the, the restaurant. It's going towards the capital improvements of the park itself.
Well, it probably would be nicer to use that $5 million in question, with, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, to fix up the park like the lady was complaining about. I mean, Hyzinga Park is beautiful. I think it's a great little park, and the other parks too. When I drive by some of them in, in Fort Lauderdale, they don't seem to be getting the support that they need from the city. And the noise ordinances, we've fought the Salt Seven, and I think they finally gave it in, and YOLO, that, they finally gave, gave it in. So, and the motorcycles, I mean, those problems are going to be all in the city of Philadelphia, of Fort Lauderdale. It's going to be multiplied on that little street behind 100 and on the side of Hyzinga. So, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. And as a Miamian, I don't want to see Fort Lauderdale looking like Miami.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Debbie Levy, followed by Stan Eichelbaum, followed by Jim McGrath.
I'm also a 100% disabled veteran from the U.S. Marine Corps, served in Vietnam.
Well, thank you for your service, sir.
Good evening. Before you start the clock, on behalf of the residents at La Solas River House, we have, are going to hand out a list of unanswered questions and concerns to each and one of, each and every one of you.
Okay. Want to give it to the clerk? And he'll distribute it. Okay, go ahead.
I'm so glad that my neighbor in the grand went before me. My concern is for the noise that, that will be generated from the proposed restaurant, The Rusty Pelican. Last week, Mr. Ladd described the proposed restaurant as "family-friendly, low-energy, non-nightclub-ish, not music-oriented." Let me share with you the description of The Rusty Pelican. Exciting experiences await at The Rusty Pelican. From lively outdoor events set to the sparkling skyline, exotic fire dancers, and high-energy music, The Rusty Pelican does more than just offer inventive cuisine. Ignite your senses and experiences. The modern, chic, and sizzling energy striking the perfect chord between seductive sophistication, glamorous nightlife. Known as the hottest destination for locals, celebrities, and tourists alike, this doesn't sound like the restaurant Mr. Ladd described last week. Thank you.
Before you go, one question, one of your questions here, can I, Mr. Mayor? And I was going to ask this later. John, can I ask you a quick question? When we spoke a couple times, we pay the DDA $100,000 a year to maintain the park, and I...
Right now, you pay the DDA $100,000 in rent.
Okay, and I...
And you maintain it, so you, you pay all the costs for, and then you pay the DDA $100,000 in rent.
This is something I was going to ask you later, but it came up in her question, so I might as well go through here. I thought that when we had spoken, that after this goes through, that $100,000 goes away.
Yeah, the rent went away, but the, the city is subsidizing some maintenance because we are taking on, in addition to the DDA-owned property, we're maintaining the city's property. So, that was a subsidized really for us taking on the city's property in addition to our own.
So, we still have $100,000 going for maintenance?
You do, but it's, but the rent, but the rent, there's no rent payment.
But this is our part of the maintenance, or what is that?
That's maintenance, for ma, it's, it's dedicated to maintenance.
Okay, that's, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, yes. Sorry for the confusion.
Debbie?
Free to go.
I'm sorry?
I'm free to go.
Yes, you may.
Oh, I'm s...
You may, thank you very much.
I know, you popped back, so I didn't know. Stan, followed by Jim McGrath, followed by, I can't read his last name, Mark, Mark Louner? Loner. Ready? Good evening, Stan, yes.
Good evening. I wish I could cheerlead, and I appreciate the work of everybody on this, but all's I can say is what's going on here? After a career of these types of meetings, I don't understand tonight any usurping of process, of protocols. Tonight appears upside down. You're being asked to approve plan and funding for a project with a consequential element that hasn't been through an RFP process as far as we can trace that is required. DDA is chartered with guidelines of following municipality process. Why would it be approved before DRC and P&amp;Z vetting to protect the public interest? What about traffic studies as discussed? EMS access? The business plan? None of these are in place yet. Hate to bring it up, but this is reminiscent of the wave. I fell for it years ago and boosted it. I fell for the worst words in business and government, "Trust us, and we think." Many of the studies didn't exist. The feasibility had huge holes that escalated the cost till death. DDA is chartered to eliminate blight, mission long ago completed, and protect public and commerce livability. Our building, La Solas Grand and Water Garden, are subject to continuously escalating noise, traffic, and valet challenges that I've talked about several times. They're getting a lot worse. We're losing friends. I've spoken to you before about it, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. This plan takes our problems and escalates them for yet another area of downtown. This isn't making any sense at all to me on it. Besides that, if you really want to do restaurants all along there, I got a great idea. Exercise eminent domain on our buildings. You can save that $15 million on the park and pay over $1 billion of residences that are turning over at an escalating rate. Let me dispel some other misinterpretations of stuff that have been going on. There's been discussion that this is a 50/50 of the community, favor and against it. We've been going out and sampling people against it. This is a devil-in-the-detail situation. When we challenge them, the best analogy is opening a Christmas gift. You open it and you smile because it's a beautiful new thing for the community. Then you find out you're paying for it with tax dollars, that gift.
I thought you were gonna say, you open it and you realize you don't have the batteries for it.
Yeah, yeah. I was thinking on it, exactly. It's not just a matter of that. It's a matter of you go onto it and you find out that it's gonna create excessive noise bothering all of your household, all your relatives. Then you go on and you find out that it never passed the safety protocols and it's dangerous to use. That's not where we wanna be on the whole thing. We want a sensible process that protects this community all the way around.
Okay, can you conclude your remarks?
There are more issues on it, of course, and more issues of the safety protocols. I've appreciated the mayor's comments of challenge of all tonight. I think it's been right on target. But Ms. Morison has been quoted as the restaurant should open in fall '24. I've been around development a long time. I've worked with many major restaurant projects. That is fast track on it. That means they think all of these things that DRC, P&amp;Z are just gonna fold and go along with it. We want it before the approval, before you designate that money all the way around. This needs to follow the disciplined process, or else you're derelict in your primary duty to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Some have talked about these usurpings as a process as being government malfeasance. And just one other thing, the traffic study that has been voiced about several times already. We bought in a traffic friend who has worked in this city for many years. He looked at it this weekend, knows the area very well. He didn't walk the area, but he's done it a million times, and said, uh-uh. He said, this isn't gonna pass muster. He said, there's so many flaws to this whole thing. As one person talked about, three blocks away, for sake of LA, does not work. Further congestion on First does not work. But more importantly, understanding why the traffic study hasn't been done and you're being asked to approve it. This is crazy.
No, we're not being asked, we're not being, stop. Wait, 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 wait. First of all, your time is up, number one. And number two, remember, we're here tonight to allocate money towards the capital improvement of the park. It has nothing to do with the site plan. We're not approving a site plan tonight. So I'm just trying to explain, don't, don't misunderstand, okay?
I think we know that all the money is contingent on other monies. It's all one pool, when you get down to it. I've done, I've been around this a little bit.
I know, I know. This isn't your first time.
Let me just say, the traffic study we're avoiding, I was shocked when I said, how much of significant costs are avoiding? $10,000 to $15,000, it's insignificant. It will placate a lot of the anxiety and protect the citizen.
Okay, your point is well taken. Okay, we have to conclude.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGrath, followed by Mark Launer, followed by Ray McElroy.
Good evening. The underpinnings of this proposed undertaking by the DDA seem to be...
Speak up a little.
Let's try this, how's that?
Yeah, there you go. Thank you very much.
The underpinnings of this effort by the DDA seem to be weak. And they're weak, as Stan and other people's pointed out, related to the parking, the traffic, the failure to do what a normal developer would do. And as a developer and a planner, I've never gotten out of any approval process without crossing all the Ts and dotting the Is. So you're dancing with a partner that's telling you one thing, and there's no guarantees that they're gonna do something else. Basing the long-term success of this effort on the restaurant has its own problems. Number one, the DDA, their term expires in 2030. How can they sign a lease longer than that? They can't legally unless you guys co-sign the lease. So that's one flaw in this issue. Second is there hasn't, to my knowledge, been any public solicitation of restaurateurs. This has apparently been a cozy or quiet backroom process to bring someone to the fore that they then say, oh, this is the best person that could possibly be doing this. Well, how do we know that? There's no public process. Would you guys do that? I don't think so. So I have very deep concerns as a taxpayer. And, you know, as our friend from Philadelphia said, Philadelphia has wonderful parks, but they're not supporting them on the back of some private enterprise or some scheme. So I seriously question the stability of this effort. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mark, followed by Ray McElroy, followed by Steve Rifkin, and then it ends with Greg Bruton. Anyone else wish to speak on this item besides the names I just mentioned? Okay.
That means I get an extra minute if there's nobody else, right? I'm short, I'm short.
Already past my bedtime.
Okay, let's go. My name is Mark Launer. I moved here 20 years ago from Asia, where I was a resident of Australia, Tokyo, Japan, Hong Kong, which I'm still a permanent resident. I had very senior positions, which included regional head of JP Morgan Bank for commodities and finance. The finance mines, in $1990, that was with Bs. Here, we're talking about Ms in 2020 talk. And I learned a long time ago, don't trust pitch books. Just go straight for the risks and look at the mitigants. That's why when you see SEC reports, first section is risks, not the project, risks. So if something's too good to be true, we have to look at it carefully. And I, listening here in the last few weeks, I wanna collapse it to its simplicity. Three factors, which will really concern you, government. One is the performance risk. Restaurants fail. I don't know the percentage, but it's pretty high. After one year, 85%. Are you willing to take that risk of failure? Number two, credit risk. Private, family-owned businesses? This is not McDonald's. Have you really looked at the full creditworthiness of who your counterparties are? I just question that.
I think they own 30 restaurants, is that what was relevant?
30 is small compared to the McDonald's.
Okay.
And when you're family-owned, you have risk. And especially when you're dealing with high net worth and various things, they don't usually show their full book.
Okay.
Third, reputation risk, again, yourselves. And I look very simply what we've encountered here in South Florida a few weeks ago, a few months ago, FTX Arena. The greatest thing from apple pie. They paid a 30-year contract, but they didn't do their work. Why? They should've asked for the money upfront. Now it blew up. Miami government is out whatever number of years, and they're out their reputation. So just another 30 seconds. You know, I'm really concerned because what I've heard what the alternatives are reminds me of the axiom of short-term pain, long-term gains. To make money, you gotta know how to lose money. So if this restaurant fails, and that's binomial, success or failure is binomial, what's your second round? Build a condo. Build commercial to obtain the true value. If that's the objective here, then watch out. That's all I say. Short-term pain, but the real objective is to extract full value. And we'll be talking here a few years later on somebody wanting to propose building condo or commercials on that site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Eagles. Philly's also. Thank you, sir. Ray McElroy, followed by Steve Rifkin, followed by Greg Bruton.
Hi, Commissioners, thank you for having us tonight. Sorry about the attire, I came from work. I don't actually oppose this project. I love parks, I'm really happy for it. I just wanted to bring some financials to light and cut through some of the noise regarding the restaurants and stuff. Regatta Park in City of Miami was put together. It's a really big park. It's seven acres. It has equal level of residential buildings around it. Was put together for $6 million. So if you can remember that, it's $19 a square foot is what that came out to be. This park, if we include all 3.6 acres, is coming in at $95 a square foot. That's a 400% increase, and that's if we take the total $15 million. So that's not really making sense. And if we drill it down further, and we take the 2.5 acres, it's $137 a square foot for a 621% increase. And then, but if what they're using for their funds of their $10 million is for the restaurants and the city's just doing capital improvements, then that comes out to $31 a square foot. But that's 63% over an almost identical park in the city of Miami. So I just wanna make sure, since this didn't go through any, like, open bidding, the city's done a really good job with the park bonds. They've been really responsible. They're getting way more for, like, bang for a buck. So now that we're opening up $5 million from the general fund, I wanna make sure it's being spent responsibly. Maybe they transfer the title, or we put it out to an open bid, so.
Okay.
That's just my thoughts, you know? Oh, the reason I brought this up is because the water rates are going up, and I think it'd be always prudent and financially responsible for the city to minimize their debt they're taking on, especially that we're facing the big water rate increase coming up.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Rifkin. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. I had this whole prepared thing for, and I timed it for two minutes, but a lot of the points have been made up, made already, and I really don't wanna be terribly repetitive. My issue is with new projects is the noise. I live in the Water Garden. I've lived there for eight and a half years. I happen to be president of our Board of Directors at this time. We have been fighting the noise at YOLO for years now. And I sort of heard solutions to this. One gentleman said we could move out. I don't think that's a great solution. I also heard that the enforcement of the code ordinances is increasing. Well, this past Friday, I would beg to differ. The noise from YOLO was so loud that it woke us up and was so loud that through the impact doors, I could hear the words of the song. So that's not enforcement. And so I'm not necessarily against this new project. My request is rather simple and I think logical. The aforementioned issues of noise and traffic and valets has not eased up over time, but they've rather worsened. So don't you think it would be a good idea to finally make good on some of the previous promises to correct these things and remedy them before another project creates just more of the same? The city has ordinances in place, they're rarely adhered to, and they're not enforced. Is that characteristic of a well-run city? I don't think so. Development is a good thing, but please don't forget that good people live here and they're integral parts of this community. They must be considered when you vote to approve new development. Please, fix the existing problems, don't exacerbate them. Thanks.
Thank you very much. As my first official duty as vice mayor, filling in for the mayor, I can now call the last participant, Greg, Greg Bruton.
Good evening. Good evening, Vice Mayor. Greg Bruton, Vice Chair of the DDA. Without risking not repeating what's already been said, I do wanna expand on something that I can talk about from a perspective of a city resident many, many years. 60 years ago, when the DDA was acquiring land in this area, I was riding my bicycle into downtown and was proud to be a part of the Bird Irons and the McCorries and the Royal Crown, or Royal Castle Burger that was on the corner of Andrews and La Sola. So from that perspective, I can tell you that when we now fast-forwarding as an employee with the city for 35 years and responsible for many of the plans that are in place as a part of the staff and looking at how we plan for the downtown to occur, how we plan for the downtown to be redeveloped, assigning a zoning classification that, as you heard earlier, no height restriction, no parking, things of that nature to increase a vibe, to build a vibrant downtown. And many of the questions that you've heard tonight with regards to site plan with redevelopment are all hashed out through the site plan process. All of these items, and tonight, we're not here to discuss a site plan, and you're not here to approve a site plan. But those items are of concern, and I can tell you as part of the DDA, we vetted a lot of that in our discussions as we move forward. You know, you don't do a parking study without a site plan. We're not at a site plan yet. You know, if we were to provide us a parking study today, it wouldn't be accurate because you wouldn't have a site plan to refer to a specific site plan with the amount of retail that's gonna be there, the amount of activity that's going to occur. It will be a preliminary parking study, which, in my opinion, would be a waste of time. So all of that will come with the due process. And I can assure you, the park, as we stated earlier, is designed and is committed to serve the public, all of Fort Lauderdale residents, all of the people who live in Fort Lauderdale. And it will remain that as a park for all of the residents of Fort Lauderdale. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Greg, I have a question for you, Greg. So just explain, because we've heard things tonight like malfeasance. We've heard that the process is not being followed, that this is topsy-turvy, upside down. Will this go through a site plan process?
Yes, and, you know, I personally kinda take exception to that because I was like a part of that process for many, many years.
Yeah.
And I can assure you that the city's staff, in their review of site plans with regards to something of this nature, will vet each and every item that is of concern when it gets to that point. There will be parking studies. There will be discussions about the activity used. How will the street be used? How will it be cul-de-sac? What will be dedicated as right-of-way? What will be dedicated as private? All of those things will be accumulated through the site plan process.
Again, because, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I am fully committed to support of what is in place today with the site plan process.
Right. And I asked you that question, and I know the answer, but I want everyone to hear that either in the chambers or at home because I wanna make sure that people understand that, again, as the mayor has said, this is an agenda item for that first payment and to amend the lease. There's a lease. This is an inter-local agreement.
Right.
Between the city and the DDA.
Yes.
This is not a site plan.
It isn't a site.
But that will come through the regulatory process.
Nothing can be built without a site plan.
Correct. Again, these are rhetorical questions. I know the answers to every single one, but I wanna make sure that everyone understands it because I just want, I don't want people to go away saying, oh, my gosh, they're not following the process. They're doing this topsy-turvy, or this is municipal malfeasance, or whatever that expression was that I heard earlier. But I wanna make sure that people understand that this is exactly not that and that at every step of the way of the regulatory process, the public will have a chance to participate, again, through that site plan. And many of the questions and concerns that we've heard tonight, and they're good ones, don't get me wrong, they're good ones. But they will be vetted by the department. Because when DRC gets a hold of the site plan, they will ask all these questions about traffic and egress and ingress.
Anyone who's been through that DRC process would think otherwise.
Exactly. It's a rigorous process. Every department in the city will weigh in on this eventual site plan.
Yes.
So I just wanna make sure that everyone understands so that they don't go away thinking, oh, my God, what are they doing? We know what we're doing. You know what we're doing. City manager, city attorney, staff, everyone knows what they're doing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Okay, there being none, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
Seconded. Seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thurman?
Are we allowed to comment after we close?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
We're not closing our public hearing.
Right, yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Mayor Trentalos?
Yes, so public hearing is now closed. Vice Mayor, this is your district, tell us what your thoughts are.
I'm gonna take a few minutes to talk. Please bear with me, I'm gonna speak for a while. This is my district. I have a lot of input. Before I begin, I wanna thank the DDA for all the work they've done. I wanna thank the community. We've had several forums. Jenny, you hosted one for me. I've met with the presidents of my association. I've had a pre-agenda meeting. I've met with Riverwalk, Downtown. The marine community has weighed in, and I have a lot of thoughts I just wanted to still. A lot of what I wanna say has been said. I just wanna bring it all together. There's a couple things that are concerning to everybody. There's three things we've discussed and one fourth thing that hasn't even been brought up in the whole evening. The concerns are keeping the park for, a park for us for perpetuity. I think I said that right, correct? Noise, traffic. And there's another concern, this concern about the Riverwalk itself and as well as the marine community. Some of the first concerns that happened when I started talking to the community, it sounded like a great idea. And then there was a couple major concerns coming out. First of all, people were concerned that we're gonna build a restaurant on public land. We'd just come off of some controversy with P3s and using public land for restaurants. land, that we'd just come off of some controversy with P3s and using public land for restaurants, and the reality is, this is not public land, the land does not belong to us, we're not putting a, a restaurant on public land. Uh, the second question was, um, people were upset that we're going to spend five million dollars to build a restaurant. Um, John, I am going to have you come up in a few minutes to answer a bunch of questions, you could come now, you're going to be here sooner rather than later, but, um, it's been put to rest, none of the 5.8 million that we're, that we're raising is going towards the restaurant.
None of the money will go to the restaurant.
Right, um, so, a couple summary things are, um, DDA owns the land, they can build anything they want on the land. We're taking 5.8 million dollars, maybe not even 5.8 million dollars, and for that, we are locking up seventy to a hundred million dollar piece of property that will not become a condo, and will stay, will stay as a, as a park. Number two, um, we're, we're spending five million dollars and getting fifteen million dollars worth of renovations to that park. We wait nine years, let's say the DDA sunsets, it comes back to a park from us, we'd have to spend a whole fifteen million ourselves, we're spending five million and getting fifteen million dollars worth of improvements to the park. And number three, like I mentioned earlier, this park is going to be ours for perpetuity. Um, what we've heard over and over again, and we have a, a view here, but when I'm in the neighborhood, there's certain groups that are opposed to the project, certain groups that love the project, everybody likes the park, but there's bits and pieces about it that, that they don't like. And the key is to find out why people don't like it, and to address what they don't like. You've heard over and over again, Charlie, you know, you guys have great reputations in the community, trust, 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 and people say, um, I don't, why should we trust the DDA? Why should we trust the City Commission? And the bigger issue is not whether they trust us, but we're not going to be here forever, believe it or not. And two, eight, six years, twelve years, there'll be a new commission up here, there'll be a new DDA, and I know that we're vigilant about noise, we're vigilant about traffic, but the people that, that are behind us, uh, might not have our vision, and so, people want to have things in writing, things to put into this agreement. And, um, John, we have spoken several times, even after I've gone to the community, and I think there's six things that I want conditions, or if you want to say stipulations to this agreement, that I really think that this commission should add to this agreement before we sign it. And I think every one of them, we've already sort of agreed to. The first couple, at the very beginning, you, you said it's a no-brainer. Number one, putting a deed restriction on that to make it a park.
That's in the agreement.
It's in the agreement already. Number two, we had spoken about this, it's the same thing, but it's just adding a little more, a little more punch. Uh, as the owner, you're the only one who's allowed to rezone it, to ask to be rezoned as a park, and we would like, we, we had asked that this thing be rezoned as a park.
I mean, the city technically could do it without a, without our permission. I think what I would suggest to you-
Well, let me read, let me read all six, and then you come back.
Well, let me just answer, because I think I got a solution for you, and we'll just knock them off one by one.
Sure.
I think when we get done with the process, then let us work with your staff on the appropriate zoning. Uh, we can't do it now, because we don't know exactly the footprint of the restaurant. Once that's done, then we can clearly come back and rezone, it's not an issue.
But just say you have the intent to maximize parking, as, park as much as we can?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I don't think rezoning is an issue, it's just, we can't do it until the, the project's built, but we'll, uh, work with your staff once we're done to, to rezone appropriately.
Number three is a commitment, and we've heard this over and over again with traffic on Southeast First Avenue. Um, they want a traffic study, we've spoken again and again about a traffic study. Uh, to do a traffic study, which, it's going to need to be done anyway, but just, no, to reiterate that, we do want a traffic study done, with the intent, the big intent is not to encroach upon that cul-de-sac if we can. Either moving the drop-off a little bit north, or, I mean, any, any ideas that we can, to do our best effort not to encroach upon that, that cul-de-sac.
I mean, in advance of the site plan, we just note that concern, and, and, uh, and do the best we can with it, understanding that is an issue, and work with the residents on it, but, you know, in advance of a site plan, I don't think we can, you know, definitely-
Well, we can't lock it down, but the intent is, or, or, our intent of this agreement is to accommodate the residents as far as, especially at the end of Southeast First, as best we can. Okay?
I mean, Commissioner, I don't know what that, Vice Mayor, I don't know what that means.
Okay, well, we'll do a traffic study, okay, to, to address these concerns, I mean-
I mean, listen, we, we've noted the concern, and we'll do our best to accommodate, but until we do a, a site plan, it's kind of impossible for us to sit here and say, you know, how we're going to utilize that cul-de-sac, but we understand the concern.
Two more items, um, number, um, well, three more. Number one, we've already addressed this a thousand times, but just that none of the five million is going towards the restaurant, and we've already, we've already discussed that. Um, uh, noise is a big concern, and again, we've discussed again and again that, no, trust us, it won't be, you know, the noise won't be bad, but that we might have a rooftop restaurant at one time, no, they're not going to have a rooftop, might have a banquet hall. Um, to actually put in the agreement that, um, uh, no outside, outside noise after 10:00 PM on weekdays, 11:00 PM on weekends, there's something actually in there, more than, no, we'll do our best.
I've heard of Jenny, but I think we, I think we, um, agreed on the record about no noise, you know, outdoor noise, so-
No outdoor noise whatsoever.
No outdoor music, I don't know. Jenny, you want to clarify that, just so I don't mess up?
So, I'll mention that the lease currently, and we're in final negotiations, does not allow for any outdoor live music, any DJed, any type of music that you would traditionally find at an outdoor seating would be ambient, I think is what we discussed. And what we're working on is the final language, whether that's quantitative with decibels, that applies with city code, and/or is a management approach where it gives the landlord the right authority and accountability to go in and turn noise off as we see. So, we're working through that, but absolutely, the lease does not, does not allow for any outdoor amplified noise of DJ, live music whatsoever.
And you would be using the rooftop for weddings and, and bar mitzvahs, okay, and, and things like that?
And when we say rooftop, it's just to be clear, I, um, there's still discussion going on, this would be the roof of the second level, and whether there is outdoor dining, uh, whether, you know, it's just a place where you could view the river, um, but certainly, as I said before, this is not an entertainment scene, this is not an outdoor, um, you know, pure venue just for gathering.
The last thing is a candid, we've spoken about this last piece, Jenny, we touched upon it, and John, um, um, I, I spoke to the Riverwalk, and I spoke to the Marine industry, and I've spoken to a lot of people who go up and down the Riverwalk, and I really, really want to limit the project to Bouvier and Hyzinga, and, and limit it to that property line, and not encroach upon the Riverwalk itself.
So-
We could come back at a later time, maybe, to discuss that, but I don't want to approve, uh, you know, abutting into the, into the, uh, Marine, Marine industry is not happy with going into, uh, anything that's going to go into the Marine, uh, lane of Marine traffic. Riverwalk, um, I, the flow of Riverwalk is going to be impeded to some degree, beautiful project, but east-west flow of Riverwalk, I think, will be impeded. And this is not me talking, this is, this is the constituents I've gone that live there, walk there, bike there, and if we could limit it to just Bouvier Park, that's the only last thing I'd like to ask.
Vice Mayor, I have a suggestion for you. So, we, uh, had already committed to work with the Riverwalk, so what I suggest, and, and, uh, the Chairman, uh, has, has allowed me to, uh, uh, offer this, is that we will sit down with the Riverwalk, if we do not get their sign off, their agreement as to what this plan is, that we commit to bring it back to the City Commission. So, we'll sit down with her, if, if they're not in agreement, what we do, we'll bring it back to you.
Let me just say publicly that, um, there, there's been a lot of concern from the community. Um, every time I've gone to you from the DDA, um, you've been exquisitely receptive, you've been very willing to work with the concerns that I have, and, uh, um, I, I thank you, thank you guys very, very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Uh, Commissioner Herbst, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Sturman, uh, mentioned quite a few of the issues that I've been considering as I've gone through this process. I'm going to try not to reiterate them all. Um, but there's a couple of things that, uh, that I just want to talk about. So, I first heard about the restaurant several months back, when I attended one of the DDA board meetings, and I heard about the rigorous process that they went through in evaluating who the restaurant operator was going to be, and I was very impressed with, with their internal processes that came to that. You know, there was some discussion about various parks, there was mention of Bryant Park up in New York. Uh, I worked a couple of way, blocks away from Bryant Park, went there at least once or twice a week. Uh, there's another great, uh, urban park in New York, it's Madison Square Park, that's the birthplace of Shake Shack, so, um, Central Park, where I used to go quite often, has several restaurants in it, Tavern on the Green being one of them. So, there are a lot of examples of urban parks that have restaurants in them that are very successful. There are also passive parks that don't have that. Um, both models work, it's not that one works to the exclusion of the others. Um, in downtown urban environments like this, I know, again, when I worked, uh, up on Forty-Second Street in the Grand Central area, walking down to Bryant Park, being able to eat, sit down there in the grass, enjoy a little bit of time away from my office was something that I looked forward to. And I think we have to remember that this park i- is in a unique area. I was having a conversation with somebody about this earlier today, and we were talking about the fact that it's got residential adjacent to it, but it also has offices next to it, it has a college across the street from it. So, this is sort of a unique environment in that it has a, a multitude of uses, and there are folks that are going to come out of an office and may want to go sit in a park and eat. There are college students that may want to go sit over there and enjoy that, you know, experience of being out there, take a book, what have you. Um, there are real concerns, I understand, with respect to River House and, and the noise, and I was very pleased to hear Charlie Ladd and, and the rest of the, uh, board talk about the fact that they're going to restrict, uh, the use of music up on that outdoor deck. I know that has been a problem downtown. Um, I lived in a couple of apartments downtown, and so I've experienced some of the amplified music, I, I understand that that can be a problem, so I appreciate their willingness to step up and do that. One of the things early on that I raised, uh, with Steve Hudson when we first started talking about this, was the idea of putting a covenant on the property, and, uh, and again, the board was willing to step up and do that, recognizing this long-term partnership that the city has with them, and the fact that the neighbors have gotten used to the idea that this is a park, and to try to undo that at this point, I think would have people coming after us with pitchforks. So, I appreciate their willingness to step up and, and acknowledge what we all, you know, take to be, take for granted. So, thank you for that. Um, the reason I was asking before about what would happen if a building was built there, and how traffic would access that site if we had a condo or something of that, is to kind of bring up the fact that that street is a street, it's not a dedicated alley that is intended to be utilized for one building for their trash, or for ingress and egress to their back of house. It needs to be a shared street, it's a city street, and the folks that own that property, that happens to be utilized as a park now, have just as much right to be able to utilize that street for their operations as does River House. It needs to be a shared street, and I'm sure that as we go through the DRC process, one of the things that we will do is ensure that everybody that utilizes that street will do it in a way that is compatible with the other residents and other uses of that street. So, I think it's important to remember that, though. This is not just a street that serves one building, it serves more than one, uh, purpose. There was some questions that related to how the city's money is going to be spent, that was addressed by the fact that our five million dollars, as it's being paid out, is intended only for construction of the public uses in the park, and one of the things that's included within this agreement is an audit clause. So, Pat Riley will have the opportunity to go in, look at how this money is being spent, and making sure that it is in fact being targeted towards the public purpose, and I encourage him to do that as the project moves forward. Um, again, I want to support the District Commissioner, uh, this is a, a signature project in his, in his district. Um, I think it's a good one, the, the DDA has always been a good partner to the city. Um, one of the things that was mentioned, and I, and I do agree with this comment, is that whatever we come to agree to now needs to be encapsulated in writing. Um, as we always say in the audit world, it's not about people, it's about process. We can have people with the best of intentions, but if it's not written down, there are opportunities in the future to undo what people have agreed to verbally, so I do believe we need to commit everything that is agreed to, to writing, reduce it to that, so that everybody that comes after us honors the same agreements. Um, thank you, Mayor, that concludes my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, tonight, this conversation has been very detailed, very well thought out. Um, the DDA has brought forward a, a wonderful presentation, given a lot of details. Um, I am in agreement with what, um, Commissioner Herbst has said, um, the process, we need to follow the process, one. Also, um, I appreciate that, um, Commissioner Sturm, he indicated what needs to be included in writing as to what is expected and what is required in order to make this a successful, um, project going forward. I believe that we can trust the process, follow the process, and having these, um, indicators, um, I believe he gave a six that he spelled out, that would be included in, on the process moving forward. Um, I'm, I'm personally excited about this particular project, I believe that it will bring, um, a great opportunity to the citywide, activating that park in a higher level, it'll be something that we can all benefit, um, as a city. Um, and I do too, respect that, um, the District Commissioner, this is something that he is embracing for his district and for the citywide. I have no other comments, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think everything's pretty much been said, I, I've really appreciated watching the improvements. I can't remember the first time I ever saw this presentation, about a year and a half ago, maybe, we've been talking about this project. I remember attending, uh, several community presentations on this. Uh, I think all of the changes that have been made are for the better. Um, in particular, again, the fact that this will remain a park in perpetuity, uh, that to me is crucial. Um, we all know what's happening with our downtown, I think the good news is, we have a downtown now. I mean, we really do have a downtown, a live-work-play-place, uh, and visit, and I, I think it's exciting, uh, and I think we really need this project, uh, to bring all of those elements together. I, I, I look forward to us moving forward, I look forward to the site plan, um, I agree with all of the concerns that have been mentioned this evening, uh, and I know that they will be fleshed out with the DDA as time goes on, and especially, uh, through the regulatory site plan approval process. So, um, I, I, I'm ready to move forward with this agenda item as well, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, would someone like to move the item?
Uh, still moved.
Mayor, I need to clarify-
I guess if we're introducing resolutions-
Mayor, Duane Spencer, Assistant City Attorney, I need clarification. So, what I heard from Commissioner Sturman was, uh, six items, but I did not, I heard a commitment, but I did not hear an agreement to amending terms in the agreement from the DDA.
I was going to ask you about that. Um, what, um, I mean, how, how do we proceed with, with adding a few of those things to the agreement?
Before you ask that question, the, the item on the agenda is just to allocate money towards the capital improvements of the park space. Is that part of this item, that the question is?
No, the item on the agenda is approving the inter-local agreement, and so, the Commissioner seemed to suggest, and I just wanted him to be clear, that, uh, he seemed to suggest that he wanted to amend the ILA to include certain provisions and commitments.
Okay.
In the, the exchange between the Commissioner and Council for the DDA, it seemed to me that his concerns were addressed on the record with a commitment from the DDA, but not necessarily an amendment to the actual ILA. If we have to amend the ILA, we're going to have to negotiate those terms and bring this item back at a later date. But if we're okay with the commitments, they can move forward with the motion. I just wanted to make sure we're clear as to the posture that we have at the moment.
Well, I don't want, I don't want to take a vote tonight unless the Vice Mayor is comfortable, and the rest of the commission is comfortable, and knowing that those matters are going to be, um, negotiable still, and that we haven't, we haven't waived our rights to amending this agreement by voting for it tonight.
Won't the DDA board have to vote on any changes to this agreement? So, whatever we're passing tonight presumably is contingent upon the DDA's subsequent approval of whatever we have proposed. I mean, they can't, they can't act in that capacity tonight, I would assume it has to go back to their board for final approval.
It, it does, but they're all here, so I think that-
It would be a counteroffer, wouldn't it? I mean, if we-
Isn't it advertised, John? It's a counteroffer, but it's, they're all here, so they can jump up if we have a problem. I'll just suggest we go by them one by one, be clear about what they are, if we have to amend the agreement, Council and I know exactly what it is, and we can fit it in the agreement. I don't think we want to come back, you, you know, you've, you've gone through your six items, I think- I think we had an understanding of how we were going to deal with them. If we want to go back through and just, for the record, be clear about what you're asking for and what we think we can do, and if we have common ground, and, you know, let's just knock it out now, so.
Hey, so Warren, can you repeat?
I'll go through. Some of them are already done. They're done deals, but it's on my list anyway. You're going to, a deed restriction.
Yes, that's an...
And that's a done deal. Number two, you're going to go, do the best that you can to rezone this as a park.
Okay, so... Once we're done, once we're constructed.
Okay. Number three...
We'll work with staff on the rezoning after the project is constructed.
My question is, what am I putting in the agreement? Am I putting that as a provision in the agreement?
That we'll work in good faith with the staff on rezoning of the property after the project is constructed.
Okay.
Okay. Number three, again, this is already in the agreement, so it's redundant. No dollars are going to go towards, public dollars towards the restaurant.
None, zero.
And that's a done deal. Number four, a traffic study will be done. I mean, it's going to be done anyway, but I just want to specifically say...
Yes, we'll do it. Even though technically it might not even trip it, because in the downtown restaurant wouldn't trip it, but we've already agreed we'll do a traffic study.
Yeah, my district strongly wanted me to bring that up.
Yes.
Number five, limit, vehicle to limit noise. Such, I mean, you already said that there's going to be no outdoor noise, but if there is a party or something, no outdoor noise after 10:00 on weekends, 11 o'clock on weekend, weekdays and weekends.
That restriction is okay, because...
It's probably in there already, yes.
Well, they have the restriction in the lease agreement that we're not party to or privy to, but if you...
I don't think, we have no objection to that.
And the last thing is going forward up until the property line, and anything going forward with the Riverwalk will be, we could readdress that at a later date, but for the moment...
We want the opportunity to meet with Riverwalk.
Right.
If they don't sign off on it, then we'll have to bring it back to you for your...
But we're not, I mean, everything up until the property line, and the Riverwalk, you could meet with the Riverwalk and come up to a consensus at a later time.
I think, but the agreement has encroachment on the city property only during the construction period, I believe.
Well, they were going to reconfigure a Riverwalk, but a little bit into the river itself, encroach a little bit right by the bridge. The marine industry didn't like that they're going to change the traffic flow around the tree, bifurcating it. And, I mean, a lot of things that are going to be going into the Riverwalk, and I'd like to put that piece on hold.
Well, okay, so do you object to us meeting with them? But if they don't agree to it, we understand we can't move forward. We'd have to come back to you for you to authorize it. We agree, we can't move forward with any plan without the Riverwalk.
Well, that's okay.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah, right.
Okay. You got that?
Yeah.
All right, so, just one thing I want to be clear on what he said. We are not in privity with the lease agreement. Has a lease agreement actually been signed with the operator?
No, it has not.
I didn't think so.
It has not. And so we're going to take into account what you're saying tonight to make sure it's incorporated in that document.
Okay.
Mayor, I just want to be clear, because I'm not in favor of just being absolute about the Riverwalk part, because I actually think the walk around the tree makes it better. I, and I know we've had this conversation prior to the three new commissioners coming on, where we've asked DDA to work with Riverwalk on all of these issues, how it affects Riverwalk. So I'm not, I'm not willing to just say right now, without looking at plans, that you can't encroach at all upon Riverwalk. I'm just not in favor of that, because we were leaving it up to DDA and the Riverwalk to work together on these issues.
Right, and we can put a provision in there that says contingent on the agreement of the Riverwalk.
I'm better with that. I just don't want to be absolute in saying this can't go past this point. You know, I just want them to work it out.
We don't want the River, the pathway of the Riverwalk interfered with it.
No, I understand. I understand.
Understood.
That's the goal here.
Right, right.
We got it.
We don't want someone saying, oh, we're having a party here, and this is roped off, and you can't walk on the Riverwalk.
Right. But I don't think that's what the plan talks about. It's, if you look at the plan holistically, as it incorporates part of the Riverwalk, it's actually, to me, an improvement of what's there now. And I think that that really, I don't want to just cut that off.
I know, but you know, sometimes, what they say, that the road to hell is paved with best intentions, you know? Let's get something in writing.
That's a little harsh.
I agree with the Vice Mayor.
Right.
Let's get it in writing, so everyone knows what the parameters are, so that we're not just saying, you know, we're all glad handing each other and say, well, we'll kick the can down the road.
We got it.
We've been there before, so...
Right. I'm in agreement with that. I just, it was sounding to me like we were coming out with maybe a statement that was a little bit more absolute in that this couldn't go past this point, or, and I just want to make sure that we're being open to the two parties working that out.
I think they need to, they need to work a few things out a little bit better. You know, the flow east-west, and a few things has to be, maybe some kinks worked out, but I just, that's what I'm opening it up for.
Right. I agree. Thank you.
All right, so the resolution that's being introduced is as amended?
The resolution's not amended, but with the conditions, with the conditions of, the conditions...
The conditions of approval being incorporated into the, into the resolution approving the interlocal...
Incorporated into the interlocal agreement.
Right. Okay.
That's something I could move now, or?
And that's something you're introducing?
You're introducing. Can I introduce that?
Okay. Any further questions on the item? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and the Downtown Development Authority of the City of Fort Lauderdale for the reimagining of Hyzanga Plaza, authorizing execution of the interlocal agreement and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturm?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and the resolution's approved. Thank you, everybody. It's not done yet. No, we're done for tonight.
So Mayor, the next two items on the agenda, although they're marked for public hearing, are treated as regular resolutions, so that's PH1 and PH2. They're just mismarked on the agenda.
Okay, so then, there are no disclosures, then?
No disclosures.
And, okay. All right, so PH1, public hearing, resolution approving an application for a dock permit for usage of public property by Rick Burgess, adjacent to 711 Cordova Road. Is there, is the applicant here represented? You're the applicant? Any questions of the applicant? We had one person signed up, Mr. Burgess, but just for questions only. Anyone have any questions of Mr. Burgess? There being none, do I have to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Would someone like to introduce the resolution? It's been introduced.
And that's for approval?
Is that for approval? It's for approval.
Mr. Mayor?
You don't have to say anything.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to section 8-144 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, granting a dock permit for installation, use, maintenance, and repair by Richard J. Burgess, a single man of a 50-foot-plus-or-minus-long and 8-foot-plus-or-minus-wide marginal dock, appurtenant access steps extending a maximum distance of 8 feet-plus-or-minus from the eastward extension from the wet face of the seawall for the property, and a 14-foot-plus-or-minus-by-10-foot-plus-or-minus four-post boatlift extending a maximum of 25 feet from the wet face of the seawall on public property adjacent to 711 Cordova Road to the waters of the adjacent Rio Cordova waterway as such property is more particularly described below, authorizing the proper public officials to countersign and record the declaration of covenants running with the land respecting a city-issued dock permit authorizing recordation of this resolution subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturm?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes.
And I just want to put on the record that there was a scripter's error in the name of the applicant and the title of the resolution. It should be Rick rather than Richard. And just noted, we'll correct the scripter's error before...
It says Rick.
It says Rick.
No, the resolution...
Oh, the resolution, you're right. The attached resolution. Okay. Is that what you wanted to say, Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Cut him off too soon.
PH2, public hearing, resolution approving an application for dock permit for usage of public property by William Premack and Vivian Alvarez, located at 1410 Southeast 11th Street. Mr. Premack, are you still here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Did you want to speak, or are you just here for questions? Okay. Anyone have any questions? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
And that's for approval?
Is that for approval?
For approval, yes.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to section 8-144 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, granting a dock permit for installation, use, maintenance, and repair by William P. Premack, a single man, and Vivian Alvarez, a single woman, of a 40-foot-plus-or-minus-long and 8-foot-plus-or-minus-wide marginal dock and access steps extending a maximum distance of 8 feet-plus-or-minus from the eastward extension of the side yard setbacks of the property located at 1410 Southeast 11th Street to the waters of the adjacent Rio Cordova as such property is more particularly described below, authorizing the proper public officials to countersign and record the declaration of covenants running with the land respecting a city-issued dock permit authorizing recordation of this resolution subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of the resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturm?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and the item's approved. PH3, public hearing and ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element to update the mixed-use land use designation and floor area ratio. I have one person sign up to speak only for questions. Anyone have any questions? There being none, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
If you would close the public hea...
I'm sorry?
This is a legislative item, doesn't need disclosures, but if you would close the public hearing...
You want us to close public hearing on this one?
Yes, please.
Okay. Someone like to move to close public hearing?
Still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturm?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on PH3. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Any discussion now?
Yeah, we introduce, someone introduce it, and then open for discussion. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Okay. Discussion, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, it used to have a 10%, this is PH3, right?
Yes, PH3.
It had 10% commercial use, and it eliminated it altogether. So I was wondering why they totally eliminated any percentage for commercial use. I mean, it's for mixed use, you would think that they would have a number in there.
Certainly. So this, the...
Introduce yourself, introduce yourself.
Nectaria Chalkus with Affirm Lockery and Chalkus on behalf of the applicant. We did eliminate that provision in the mixed-use regulations simply because it was a very detailed provision that simply belongs in your land development regulations. When we look at comprehensive plan land use categories, we tend to look at things that are more general. The formula was also rather confusing, and when you look at a mixed-use building, for instance, let's say a multifamily building, the example that was stricken through in the comprehensive plan that you see dealt with single-family homes, which you're not going to get in a mixed-use development. But when you have a true mixed-use development, like the kind that we're proposing in the next item, you have a building that could be 300,000 square feet in gross floor area, and 10% of that would be 30,000 square feet of commercial in that one building, and that's simply not realistic. And so that provision was, A, confusing, B, unrealistic, and I think, C, just doesn't belong in the comprehensive plan. It belongs more in your land development regulations.
Well, the only thing is, you have nothing there, and you could have like one Indian's, and that's, or a hot dog stand, and that, there's no number whatsoever, but...
So one of the things that I would ask you to consider is that there's only one zoning category that implements this mixed-use category, and that is the plan development district. The plan development district is, that's something we're going to be coming in front of you next in probably about three or four months. And you can look at the amount of commercial square footage that development has, and if you think it's insufficient, you can certainly, you know, request that. So that's, that's really the reason, we don't see those kinds of percentages in land use categories, because they're simply intended to be more general.
Thank you.
Any further questions? There being none, the ordinance has been introduced, please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Policy FLU 1.1.9 to change the name of the mixed-use residential future land use designation to mixed-use to amend the description, density, and intensity standards permitted use and design guidelines of the mixed-use land use designation, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions transmitted to the applicable reviewing agencies and providing an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturm?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and the ordinance has now been approved. PH4, this is a public hearing, ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Designation from Medium High Residential to Mixed Use for 200 and 400 Corporate Drive. One person signed up to speak for questions only, and does anyone have any questions with regard to this item? No one else has signed up to speak. Would someone please move to close public hearing?
Still moved.
Second.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturm?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced, please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, adopting an amendment to the City of Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Designation from Medium High 25 Residential to Mixed Use all of Track 1's shell at I-95, according to the plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book 102, page 25 of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, together with a portion of that certain canal vacated by ordinance recorded in Official Records Book 12368, page 909 of the Public Records of Broward County, Florida, lying west of Track 3 and east and north of Track 1 of said shell at I-95, located west of Corporate Drive, north of East Cypress Creek Road, east of I-95, and south of the C-14 Canal, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, and authorizing the proper city officials to transmit the proposed amendments supporting data and analysis to reviewing agencies. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sturm?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and the ordinance is now approved. Public hearing five, this is a quasi-judicial resolution granting a waiver of limitations at sixteen-forty-five East Lake Drive for the installation of one, uh, boatlift extending a maximum of thirty feet plus or minus. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Um, yes, I met with, um, Jason Crush on the twentieth of this month.
Okay, um, Commissioner Glassman?
That, yeah.
Oh, wrong, I'm on the wrong item?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, no disclosure.
No disclosure, okay.
No disclosures.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Sterman?
None.
And I have none. But I do have a question, but we'll get to that in a moment. Is anyone here... I have one person who signed up to speak, but for questions only, um, and... Anyone else wish to speak on this item? There being none, someone move to please call, close public hearing?
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Mr. Martinez, are you here? Can you come up to the podium for a second? I just want to ask a question. I know this is not your property, but you're representing the Latham's?
Yes.
Okay, could you speak into the microphone if you could?
Yes, yes, I am.
So, so, the house is on the corner of, like, the lake and a canal, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the canal, um... Where is this, uh, dock waiver being positioned? Where is, where is the, the piling being requested to be installed? It was a little unclear from the backup. Is it on the canal side or on the lakeside?
It's kind of right in the middle there. It, the, the property is both on the lake, and that canal, um, area is only maybe about a hundred feet. The property is about a hundred and ten feet, so the location is kind of right on Lake Sylvan and entering that canal right there.
Right, but where, i- into what waterway is it going to protrude the thirty...
The Lake Sylvan waterway.
It's going to be in the Lake Sylvia, Sylvan side?
Yes.
Not the canal?
No, not the canal.
Okay, all right. It was unclear with the diagram and the pictures in the backup, so, okay. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Martinez? There being none, um... Okay, would someone like to introduce the, the resolution?
Introduced.
And that's for approval?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to section forty-seven dash nineteen-point-three of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Unified Land Development Regulations, granting a waiver of the limitations of ULDR section forty-seven dash nineteen-point-three C to permit LNG Latham as trustee of the LNG Latham Revocable Trust under agreement dated July eleventh, two thousand and seven, as amended, a thirty-foot-plus-or-minus-by-nineteen-feet-plus-or-minus-thirty-three-thousand-pound-eight-post boatlift extending a maximum of thirty feet plus or minus from the property line in the adjacent waters of Sylvan Lake, such property being located at sixteen-forty-five East Lake Drive, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and more particularly described below, subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and the, uh, and the, uh, resolution is now approved. PH six, public hearing, quasi-judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from residential multifamily mid-rise, uh, medium-high-density district to northwest regional activity center mixed-use east district. This is at six-twenty-eight Northwest Third Avenue, east of Northwest Third Avenue, west of Northwest Second Avenue, south of Northwest Seventh Street, and north of six-ten Northwest Third Avenue, Water Tower Apartments. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Do you have any disclosures, Commissioner Herbst?
Yes, I did, I met with, uh, Jason Crush.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes, I also, um, met with Jason Crush.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, uh, site visit, and also met with, uh, attorney Crush and client.
And Vice Mayor Sterman?
Uh, none.
I have none either, I don't think we met on this. I don't think so, no. Um, okay, uh... Mr. Crush has signed up to speak, but I think it's only for questions, and, uh, does anyone else, anyone from the commission have any questions? Anyone in the public wish to speak? There being none, um, will someone please move to close public hearing?
Sold.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded?
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and public hearing on PH six is now closed. Someone wish to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
This is for approval?
Correct.
Okay.
An ordinance amending section forty-seven dash one-point-six-point-B of the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale and Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and by reference made to part thereof, so as to rezone from residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to northwest regional activity center mixed-use east district, all of lots thirty-seven through forty-eight, block three-twenty-one, according to the plat thereof as recorded in plat book two, page eighteen of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located west of Northwest Second Avenue, north of Northwest Sixth Street, east of Northwest Third Avenue, and south of Northwest Seventh Street, all said lands being in the Ci, City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and PH six is now approved. Congratulations. OFR one, this is an ordinance on first reading. This is an ordinance amending the Unified Land Development Regulations, sections forty-seven dash nineteen-point, uh, three, on boat slips, docks, boat davits, hoists, and similar mooring structures. And forty-seven dash thirty-nine, uh, development regulations for annexed areas and adding section forty-seven dash nineteen-point-thirteen, resiliency standards for tidal flood protection. Okay, um, no one has signed up for, to speak. Anyone have any questions with regard to this ordinance on first reading?
Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I did have a comment. I spoke with Dr. Gasman about this. This is something we discussed during my agenda meeting last night. I've asked them to conduct some outreach. Not everybody realizes that when you have to repair more than fifty percent of the lineal footage of your seawall, that you now have to bring the wall up to current standards for height. And when I looked at the numbers a few years ago when the city did a study, that was about a thousand dollars per lineal foot. So, this is an ordinance that's been in place for a while at the four-foot level, three-point-nine feet, but now we're increasing it to the county's level. And again, anybody that's in one of these older neighborhoods, say Coral Ridge Isles, for example, uh, Imperial Point, perhaps, that has an older seawall that may have some deterioration, is going to be impacted if they have to do repairs and bring it up to current standards. So I just asked that they do some outreach, just to let people know. It's obviously, uh, an issue all throughout the city, but it definitely impacts my area, and they're going to be doing that, so, um, I'm in favor of the ordinance. Uh, it brings us into compliance with the county, so, but I just want to make sure we do that outreach. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Com, um, Mayor, also in regards to that outreach of, um, parts of District Three can be included in that as well. As you know, that we have neighbors that live on the New River as well, so that would impact us. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's only fair. Any further questions or comments? There being none, would someone like to introduce the ordinance on first reading?
Introduced.
It's been introduced, please call the roll.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations to establish resiliency standards for flood protection, amending section forty-seven dash nineteen accessory uses buildings and structures, section forty-seven dash thirty-nine development regulations for annexed areas, establishing tidal flood barrier infrastructure standards that account for projected sea level rise, providing for abatement of nuisance flooding, providing for real estate sale disclosures, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and repeal, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Glassman?